It is now five o'clock, September seventeen, twenty nineteen. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox. Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez. Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Cox absent.
I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to address the council, therefore can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have one item this evening. It's pending litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one. The case name and the case number are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to a closed session and a regular session convinced at six P M. Good afternoon, everyone. It is now six P M, September seventeen, twenty nineteen. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council's sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox. Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Cox absent.
At this time, can we have a close session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had only one item this evening. It was pending litigation pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine D one. The name of the litigation is set forth on the agenda, as is the case number, and at this point, there is no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. We will have the invocation delivered by Elder Steve Dweigans of Calvary Chapel of Victorville, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bessinger, so please stand.
Dear Lord, we thank you for allowing us to gather together, to have a place to gather. I pray that you would just bless each person here that is making decisions on behalf of the people of City of Victorville. I pray that you would just help them to make wise decisions that are helpful and in the best interest of all those that are represented. I pray that you would bless them as they make these decisions. I pray that you would be part of every decision that is made in this city and that you would just be glorified in the things that are done here, Lord. And we thank you and pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
[inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do have a presentation by Juan Lopez with Southern California Edison Government Relations Manager, P S P S Wildfire Mitigation Plan.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, how are you? Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff, and the community. Again, my name is Juan Lopez, Government Relations Manager with Southern California Edison, and I want to thank you today for the opportunity to come and present to you guys our wildfire mitigation plan. As you know, there used to be fire season, and that's no longer the case. Fires are year-round. And ten of the last twenty most destructive California fires, wildfires have happened here since two thousand fifteen. At Southern California Edison, objectives of our S E E wildfire mitigation plan starts with the first one, which is to protect public safety. Second one, to implement the plan to reduce the risk of potential wildfire-causing ignitions associated with S E E electrical infrastructures. Implement measures that further harden S E E electrical systems against wildfires and to improve system resiliency. Enhance wildfire suppression efforts to improving fire agencies' ability to detect and respond to emerging fires in coordination with utilities, emergency management personnel, and effectively communicate with customers, communicate with groups, and other stakeholders about how to prevent, prepare for, and mitigate the effects of wildfires. On this next slide, we have an area map. This map is approximately one-third of S E E fifty thousand square feet, I mean squared miles service area is located under high-fire-risk areas. This map is, it's a combination of historical map boundaries from CAL FIRE, Fire Hazards Surveying Zones maps, and most recently, the C P U C High Fire Threat District maps are used to inform S E E high-fire-risk areas. S E E wildfire mitigation strategy has taken substantial steps to reduce the risk of wildfires and will continue to proactively enhance our operational practices and infrastructures through our comprehensive wildfire mitigation strategy. A longstanding operational practices is what we're doing. Investing in system hardening and electrical grid, bolstering situational awareness capabilities, and also enhancing operational practices. Our scope of the S E E twenty nineteen S B nine oh one, the wildfire mitigation plans, the first part includes inspections, and I won't go into reading all this because I'll be presenting in the next slides on this, but the first part is inspections, our public safety power shut-off, situational awareness, vegetation management, and our infrastructure is covered conductors, undergrounding, and other infrastructure mitigations. Some of the things that we're doing as far as our infrastructure system hardening elements, we have where we're doing our cover conductor. We've done many models of that throughout our service territory now, fast-acting current limited fuses, and also reclosures, which is like circuit breakers. Our enhanced overhead inspections, we started that back in twenty eighteen, and in the last five months, our crews completed detailed ground base inspections over four hundred thousand distribution and transmission structures on high-fire-risk areas. Deployed, we deployed helicopters, drones equipped with infrared, ultraviolet, lidar, and H D image scanning to perform aerial inspections of our facilities in high-fire-risk areas. Our situational awareness capabilities, and this is some of the smart grid that we're working and updating in our infrastructure, starting with weather stations, which give us high-resolution data and local weather, advanced weather modeling, which better forecasting and advancing warnings for our service territory, and fire monitoring cameras with high-definition remote control. And all this is monitored twenty-four hours, seven days a week by our S E E meteorologist, and that's in our situational awareness center, which is located in Arwindale. You see this picture right here is a picture of one of the fires. This is the holy fire that happened near Corona, going over towards Orange County. And if you look at this, it was just installed a couple days after that. That's the picture there. The important of this is not just to capture the fire, but really what it does is it helps out our first responders, you know, when they're out there, making sure that if they're going to be sending our firefighters or anyone to go look at, whether it's structures or anything on that for the fire, that it keeps them safe. And so there's a lot of those cameras that we've been installing. On the next slide, it shows, on this website, you can look at, and also on s e dot com, you can look at all the different cameras that we have. And in partnership with other agencies and also with other utility companies, we have paired and worked together so that we have access to each other's cameras. Because, you know, even though our territory is fifty, it's a certain area, it also goes into others' territories, so we work together with other agencies the same. The next one is our weather stations, and that's the same thing. We work together on that. Now, I do want to make a note that our cameras and weather stations, our first responders have access to those, and so that if they're able to use them themselves, and we have an agreement with them, but the public and everyone has the ability or access to see where all these, all the weather stations and cameras are located. Our vegetation management, we've done over nine hundred thousand trees inspection. We do that every year. Seven hundred thousand prune per year and four hundred trees in high-fire-risk areas is where it's located. Just in twenty nineteen, we have continued to remove dead, dying, diseased trees on trees in high-fire-risk areas, and also we removed an additional seven thousand five hundred trees this year, besides that we've done what we do annually. Our public safety power shut-off is a practice that we've had in place for many years. De-energize and to prevent ignition from power lines using, used during extreme fire conditions, primarily impact circuits in high-fire-risk areas. Other circuits in non-high-fire-risk areas may be impacted if the transmission line are de-energized. Red flag warnings does not mean that P S P S will be enacted. Actually, frequent P S P S events will depend on various weather and environmental factors. And so there's three layers of how the P C U C has decided which are the high-fire-risk areas. We're in the lower run. One of the things that we look out in our communities here, especially in the high desert, is high heat and winds is one of the ones as a factor on our public safety, public shut-off. Our P S P S decision points, it's not limited, but our meteorologists forecast strong winds conditions on our service territory, fire scientists' assessments of fire potential to include consideration of weather and fuels, and also real-time observation from qualified electrical workers, monitoring for hazard conditions in the field, and impact de-energized circuits or first responders and essential services. This is the ideal timeline, P S P S ideal timeline, and the way it is, we have four to seven days in advance ahead, a forecast through our center. We're monitoring the weather and fire conditions. Then the third day ahead, the S E E Incident Management Team is activated. We have over four hundred of our staff who are part of that group of our Incident Management Team. And what that is, is that, for example, I'm part of that team as well, and so one week that I'm on duty, that means that they have access to me twenty-four-seven. And so there's four hundred of us who can rotate throughout the whole week, every day twenty-four-seven, all year long. So that team is activated. At that time, we already contacted all of our partners, county, CAL FIRE, any folks, city fire, or anybody where we're thinking about P S P S on that circuit is what we're considering, so we do that. On the second day, our first notification of P S P S has been sent out to the agencies and to our customers. And then the second notification, when we send out that there's a possible, so that's two days, I mean, one day ahead of what we're looking at. And the third notification is to let you know that we have shut down the power because of an event. And that's just, you know, and then the fourth, the fourth notification will be to make sure that we let you know that the power is going to be going back up. But after we do inspections, and we make sure that it's safely to do so and to turn it back on. Our community resiliency and preparedness, power outages can occur for many reasons. It's for maintenance, emergency repairs, requests from fire agencies, and natural disasters. At S E E, we want to make sure that you have a plan and that you are prepared. These are some different websites that you have access to, what I mentioned throughout my presentation. One that I think is important is that we want to make sure that all of our customers, that we have their updated contact information, so if we need to get a hold of them, that whatever their preference is, rather is by phone, by email, by text, by a call, we want to make sure we do that. We're also part of our P S P S. We conducted community meetings throughout high-fire-risk areas. We had our last one here in Victorville. Mayor, you were there. Thank you so much for, you know, for the opportunity for you to be there. I know the fire chief was also attended, and I think that is a great opportunity, so we're doing our part to go out and educate our community. So that is my presentation, and if there's any questions?
Yeah, I actually have some. Mr. Lopez, you began your presentation, and I had to kind of lean over. I wasn't sure what the purpose was in terms of the city really negotiating, or whether it's collaborative or informational. So if you would clarify, what was the purpose of your presentation? Is this just an overhead for every city that you happen to do? I mean, what's the takeaway for me as a council member in terms of my community to be able to engage in what you've projected today?
Well, thank you for the question, council member. Yes, it's an informational is what we're doing. And I'm doing it through all of our council meetings throughout the area that I represent, but not just myself. We're actually doing it to all the cities in our service territory. And so it's for us to educate you guys and let you know about what P S P S, what our wildfire mitigation plant is, and so that rather, even if you're not on that list or your circuits are not being impacted, we're still educating the community because it does affect a lot of our customers in our community.
Yeah, and P S P S, what does that acronym refer to?
Oh, it's Public Safety Power Shut-Off, so it's a practice that we have in place that in case there, we see there's a weather condition or something that maybe one of our circuits may cause a fire, then we shut it down so that we can prevent that from happening.
My last and final question is, how is S E E specifically collaborating with the fire department in terms of the cameras? Do you have a specific Victorville example of how the collaboration with the city has assisted directly the community?
Well, since you just recently have your fire department, I know I've been in contact with the fire chief, and the fire chief actually attended our community meeting based on our P S P S, and so did the mayor. So we are communicating. And the way it is, we have not only our incident command team, but we have groups of folks that communicate with CAL FIRE, county fire, city fire, and then your city also has staff designated for emergency, so that's how we're communicating with them.
As a council member, I'm very active in my community, and I would have loved to receive something of that nature. That way, when I'm up here and you're giving the presentation, it looks like I know a little bit more, but this is my first encounter, so please feel free to also reach out to me. I would like to be able to participate in any community-related so I can bring back to the community what's happening with S E C and the collaboration with the city as a whole.
Okay, definitely. I will make sure we do that. I'll work with staff and yourself. I know you have a city email, so I'll make sure you get that information out to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have one question, if I may.
Yes.
So, forgive me for this, but what is de-energization? Does it have to do with the power lines themselves when there's a risk?
Well, when you de-energize a circuit, that means that you shut it down, and it no longer has power.
Right. So if I'm driving down the road, is it the actual power lines? Are those the circuits that you're talking about?
It depends, but yes, it could be a transmission or a distribution circuit, so it all depends on what that is.
Well, I certainly do thank you for your presentation. I know that we've had a lot of very destructive wildfires in the past several years, and I know that a lot of the issues that people were talking about were vegetation surrounding power lines and circuits and so forth. So it's helpful for me to hear the information that you just gave, and thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez, and here's my card.
Yes. Any other questions?
Yes, I would like to ask you a question.
I'll go get your card. Yes.
My question is, I've always been told that in the desert, mostly you put up wooden poles rather than steel. In the areas of high-fire zones, are they metal?
So there's a new type, I don't want to say metal, it's a new composite that they're being made. And so what we've done is that with all these inspections, we've found a lot of stuff that needed to be replaced and all that. So that's one of the first waves that we're working on that. But yes, we are looking onto that. And so the three cities that are on the list for the P S P S are Victorville, Adelanto, and Apple Valley. And so I've done presentations, and I'm going to do Apple Valley next week. So I'm also going to let them know about those circuits and information on that. So that's where we start to look at if we need to replace. We're on the second tier, high-fire-risk areas is the third tier, which is our mountain communities and other areas. And so it's a case-by-case if it's needed. Some of the infrastructure is still good enough to continue to leave it there, but if it needs to be replaced for that, we definitely have our staff looking into it.
In your vegetation management, I noticed that in the photos was basically trees. Is it only trees that you actually look at because of the fact that we're out here in the desert?
Trees, brush fires, bushes, all the stuff that will enact, but also looking at that can be cost like a fuel, right? So you need for it to cause a fire, you need something to make the fuel, right? Rather is a brush, a tree, and all that. And one of the things that we implemented is that especially in high-fire-risk areas, a tree would have to be twelve feet instead of the different feet before for it to be close enough to one of our power lines, just to be on the safe side.
Now, does Southern California Edison work in coalition with the forestry department? Because I was caught in that last major fire where we were detour on Ranchero, and then we were forced back onto fifteen. So my question is, do you work with other departments in regards to the fire prevention?
Actually, we do. We work closely with CAL FIRE, Forest National, all the folks, federal, state, and local level, and our vegetation management department, they're in constant communication with. And not just on our P S P S, but also on a yearly basis, daily basis, weekly, we are communicating with them to make sure that we are up to date on what we need to do to prevent these fires.
And the last question is, do you educate the public regarding fire prevention?
Yes. And so like I mentioned, we just had a meeting last month here in our community. I did send out the invitations to all the council members. And then also, we're having one actually tomorrow in Lake Arrowhead. This is actually the second one that we have there. We had one in Wrightwood, and then just throughout all our service territory, so up all the way to Ventura County, down to L.A., Orange County, and Riverside. So we've been pretty active on doing that, and we've been sending out the information. So even when we had the meeting here, we send it out to all the cities and everyone in the community, and we had it here in your city.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you so very much. We really do appreciate it. Very informative. The second presentation that we have is by staff, update and community communications online portal.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sorry, my slide, it's in the middle of my slide deck. Tony, could you move it to the first slide, please? So this evening is in response to your June fourth request for staff to look into a better online tool for customer service. One of the examples that was given was GoGov Apps or GoRequest. So staff took some time to look into those. We looked at GoGov Apps, GoRequest, C Click Fix, and Tyler three one one. And then the criteria we used in looking at these systems to provide better customer service is that it integrates with our existing systems. It integrates with G I S or Geographic Information Systems, and that is G I S-based for user ease, and the cost. We ended up choosing Tyler three one one for a couple of reasons. It integrates out of the box with our existing work order systems that staff's already using, Munis, Intergov, and it has A P I's, application programming interfaces, to integrate with other work order apps that we use here at the city like Setaroo. It's already something that we have access to as we upgrade our core apps, Munis and Intergov, to the twenty nineteen version, so there's no additional cost. We get this with our existing licensing we pay for with Tyler, Munis, and Intergov. It has mobile app version, which that was something I know the council was interested in, as well as a web version that works across all platforms. This is just a couple screenshots of what it looks like. So you can see the web-based picture on top. It has a G I S map, and it's very G I S-centric. This particular example is like a member of public could go on our website and see which requests are outstanding. So maybe they're going to file the same noise complaint. They can see someone already did it, so they can like, hey, me too, or they can file their own, or maybe they'll just be like, oh, somebody's already complained. I don't need to pile on. And then there's a couple screenshots of what the app looks like. The app is customizable or themeable, so this is an example city for us. We probably have our city, you know, logo or whatever graphics we feel would represent us best. And then they can take a picture with the hardware on the phone, so they could take a picture of the pothole, they could take a picture of whatever the issue is. It'll use the GPS hardware on the mobile device to put that into the work order that goes to the field staff, so we'll know where it's at, which is pretty standard across all the applications we look at. And then, does anyone have any questions? Oh, there was supposed to be a timeline slide. I apologize. So we need to upgrade our existing Munis and Intergov to the twenty nineteen versions. That's underway. I expect to be able to rule this out towards the end of this fiscal year. Once we get the new versions upgraded and running, then we'll install this Tyler three one one and present it to the community.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you receive all type of complaints, including the fireworks?
Yes. Right now, on our website, citizens can go on there and fill out a form to submit a request for a whole number of issues. If you go to the I Want To section, pretty much every category is there, and then there's also just a general request. And I believe the fire chief sent a presentation to council with how many people came through our website specifically for the fireworks. I want to say it was hundred or so. I don't know if anyone remembers the exact number.
How often do you upgrade it? I'm sorry, I missed it.
So this is a new module we'll be adding to our existing enterprise resource planning applications, the Munis and Intergov. And those, we upgrade anywhere on a two-to-three-year cycle. It just depends on what functionality comes out that we want to take advantage of. And another key driver is if we can still get tax updates to the financial system, Munis.
Thank you.
No problem.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple questions, if I may. Thank you. So the very first slide, if I recall correctly, there were three different?
Yes, there was three that we looked at.
Oh, am I to take from this presentation that your preference is the Tyler three one one?
Yeah, because there's no additional cost, and it integrates with our existing E R P applications.
Okay. And I know that the council wanted a presentation on this, that the council is still going to have to make a determination as to whether we would want to go forward with something like this. I would like to think that it's extraordinarily beneficial to our community, but I think we still need to weigh in on that at the appropriate time. This is just a presentation?
This is a presentation, and typically what we would do is, considering there being a cost element to it, that would be what triggers us bringing it back. As we've shared with the council and even the public, we've put a tremendous amount of focus over the last year in trying to improve our customer service experience, and we've done so, even more so with the website and driving a lot of activity through the website and actually encouraging the Embrace the Complaint campaign. And the fact that this is sounding as if it's no cost, this would seem consistent with my management responsibility of trying to make the customer service experience the best as possible. So that being said, to me, it just sounds like it would be consistent with what we want to accomplish. So I would intend to move forward to the extent it doesn't cost any additional money and can be rolled out as a part of what we've already budgeted, which is the upgrade to our E R P. I would just include this as a part of that, and just move forward.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
And I also have a couple of questions as well. So one of them is, this is a presentation, so in anticipation of thinking of Tyler three eleven being integrated with everything that's already in play, do you anticipate, I'm not asking you to kind of guess if council will adopt something of this nature, even though we heard the city manager that he wants to better customer service, and this would be something in the works, but I would be remiss not to ask, when would this be implemented?
I would expect this is something we could roll out towards the end of the fiscal year, once we complete our upgrades.
The end of fiscal year is June twenty twenty?
Yeah, hopefully before then, but I don't have an exact time. Depends on how much work goes into doing the upgrades.
And then, in your research, I'm assuming that you guys did- And then, um, did you, in your research, I'm assuming that this, you guys did research and then the reporting that we don't have available to us through the presentation, there is potential other cities already using this. So it was not just the facility of integrating it with the system that we currently have, but also what other cities have acknowledged or any impact that they have had.
Yeah, all of the applications we looked at, numerous cities are using. All of them are fairly well represented in the market. Um, I think going to the reporting and, uh, if we look at the screenshot again, th- this portal, that'll be on the web, city's website, we'll brand it to look like our city. But you can see all of the complaints that are out there, just, you know, any member of the public, member of the council could go in there. And, uh, you can click around on the map and change filters if you, you wanna see more. Um, and then, you know, if there was a need for any sort of custom reporting or additional reporting on top of that, that's something that, being that it's a Tyler product, uh, staff has expertise in developing custom reports.
Okay. And then, um, is this application collaborative with other cities or applications that would consistently have similar types of services? And I'm reflecting on V V T A. They already have an application. And if we can integrate or it's something that we have, I don't know? That's why I'm asking.
I don't know either. It's something we could, uh, explore if the council wishes.
Okay. And then, um, since this is merely an update that I kind of heard me ask, do we have an approximate cost or are we still looking at a cost if there is, is any? And will there be a testing period?
One of the reasons we selected this one is we already get this new module. This Tyler 311 is part of our Tyler software licensing agreement we already have with them. So that covers the Munis and Intergov products we use for our financial H R land management systems. And this is something that they're rolling out and making available to us for no additional costs. It's, it's a enhancement to the products we already own.
And lastly, please share the presentation with council.
Sure.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I might add, um, as we roll it out and ideally before we roll it out, um, we'll actually bring back a presentation for this council so that the council is aware and also the public is aware of how the, uh, front end side of it, uh, works, uh, so that you can see directly the customer service experience. We'll also share with you what the back office looks like, which is the side that we see and how it ties to a number of our other, uh, programs. Just making our, our ability to respond and manage cases a lot, a lot easier. So we'll bring that back, uh, as we roll out.
Very well. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I do have one follow-on question, if I could, um, directly related to what the city manager, um, just mentioned. May I? Thank you. Um, so presuming that, um, the community is gonna have greater access, um, to the city in, in reporting things, it might be more convenient to them. We were apt to get more reports. Will we have the staff to, uh, the staff necessary to accommodate?
I, I hope so. I certainly hope so. It's, uh, you know, I think you're right. We'll probably see an increased volume, but I think also probably what you'll see is duplicate and triplicate of, of similarly natured complaints. So, um, we'll probably be able to assess after we're actually up and running and maybe have had a, you know, six month to 12 month experience with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, at this time, I will have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The Victorville City Council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be required to fill out a white speaker card located in the lobby and give it to the city clerk. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council, not to the members of the audience. In accordance with state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. I do have three ver- revisions. Revision to item number B1, revised exhibit B, added language to ordinance number 2395, agenda page 22. Revision to item number D5, revised exhibit A, area map of proposed underground utility district, agenda page 331. And revision to item number D8, revised attachment 1, revised resolution number 19 dash 057, agenda page 355. Those are all the revisions I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, um, if there is an item on the agenda that may, may be a conflict of interest to any council member, please, um, identify that item at this time. Do we have any conflict of items? We do not have any appeal hearings. Uh, therefore we move on to public hearing. Item number B1, case number Plan 19 dash 00027, a Victorville Municipal Code Amendment to allow used automobile sales on property located at 14850 La Paz Drive, applicant Avis Budget Group, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct the public hearing, find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Secua Section 15061B and Section 15301, introduce code amendment ordinance number 2395 for adoption and first reading by title only, waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2395, and adopt resolution number 19 dash 071 approving the conditional use permit.
Thank you. At this time, council members, uh, do you have any questions of staff? And this is a two-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez, do you have a question?
Yes. So in terms of changing and, and keeping up with the automobile industry related to specifically space, what is the city, what is the city doing to engage with the C U Ps to modify and cut out car dealerships entirely to supplement the new trend of the direct-to-consumer subscription services? As many of you have seen modeled by Tesla and Volvo and other car companies? And has the city ever considered something of this regard?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if, if the question is, uh, I thought I heard cutting them out. Um, there's no concept of that being discussed with staff where we're trying to cut out auto sales within the C2 zoning. In fact, uh, because of the changing marketplace, the changing dynamics with auto sales altogether and, and what we're seeing is an increasing demand for use, what we're actually trying to do with this, um, code change is make the C2 or allow for the C2 zoning to be more accommodating, not only to new auto sales as a primary use, but also to allow for used as primary in a C2 zone designation.
So, um, for clarification, the term cut out is not, which was reinterpreted by the city manager, to consist something about banning? That's not my interpretation or the relay, the relay that I wanted to use with that term. It was more space. If you look at, for example, the city of Los Angeles, space, um, becomes very, very needed in parking with vehicles becomes an issue. So looking at our future in the city of Victorville, when I said to cut out was, are we trying to implement the subscription to customer service, still keeping dealerships with that in mind without the space to be used? Cause it could be used to preoccupy many other things rather than a lot that sits with vehicles. That's what I was getting to when I stated what I did state.
And, and Madam Mayor and members of the council, um, we monitor closely, as close as we can, the, the changing circumstances in the all commercial marketplaces. And we believe, uh, as we're responding in this particular case, that our code is, um, as compatible, as compatible as it could be to accommodate, uh, the auto sales industry.
And then my other question is historically, what has this particular site accommodated in the last few years?
Uh, some of the history that I'm familiar with dates back to, uh, early 2000, maybe even 1999. The site was originally, uh, developed by an entity called Team Car Sales as a budget car sales rental. I'm sorry, budget car sales facility, uh, sales only, no rental, is what I recall. Um, it had subsequently, uh, gone vacant. It had operated as a new car dealership for Fiat and Alfa Romeo at one period of time. There was a period of time where it was serving an interim need for the Department of Motor Vehicles, uh, serving some of their administrative purpose. Those are the three that I can recall. Sophie, you recall anything more?
Uh, motorcycle sales, I think it was Indian at one point. Um, and you mentioned the temporary DMV use, correct? And some kind of truck rental. They are all listed, um, on the, on the agenda.
Yeah, they're listed.
App report.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have one card, speaker card, John Valdez.
And thank you, staff and Madam Mayor. And thank you for having me. I'm with, uh, Avis Car Sales and I just wanted to kinda, um, honored to be here as a representative of our company. And, uh, as you mentioned, that, uh, we, we're once there as budget and we are now Avis Budget Group. But we will be conducting business as Avis Car Sales, uh, late model used, everything's guaranteed in terms of warranties. So we look forward to, uh, you know, a great success and being a great, you know, civic partner to the city of Victorville. So I'm here for any questions of, of anything.
I just wanna say welcome to our city.
I guess I, I'll produce a question. I have a question. Since you were here prior as budget in, were the sales perhaps something that weren't up there and you decided to move out of the area and then come back as Avis because after the recession and I'm anticipating forecasting, you left because of that and then came back. But of course, this is surmising, but I would like your, your opinion.
You know, I don't know the, the nature of, of, of our first departure. I will know that it was a franchised, uh, operation. So, you know, sometimes in those particular agreements, those, you know, obviously has expiration. So that may have had something to do with it. But, uh, you know, as, uh, uh, the city manager has pointed out, you know, as, as far as the late model trends are involved and you often, you had mentioned also, you know, the online side of things. We also combat in the same way, except for we have standing cars. So, you know, we're still trying to get digital visibility and exposure, just to the same kind of effects that, uh, a lot of your digital campaigns are doing. But we have the cars, you know, here, sitting here. We have an abundant amount of cars coming off of our rental fleet. So, you know, we have nothing but cars to move and, uh, price to, uh, to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Valdez.
Thank you so very much. That was the only card that I had. Therefore I close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville amending Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code, case number Plan 19 dash 00027, to conditionally allow used automobile sales within the C2 general commercial district on a minimum one gross acre developed site.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda, specifically items, uh, excuse me, points one through five.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
I move on to item B2, request for continuance of the approval of a loan of neighborhood stabilization program, one and three funds to Desert Haven, Victorville LP. Uh, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council open the public hearing, take testimony, and continue the public hearing to October 1st, 2019 city council meeting.
Thank you. Uh, council members, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I do. Um, what is the purpose for having this item continued? It's not clear to me in the reporting why staff is recommending that this item be continued. And would also staff be able to touch briefly on the money adoptions and the reimbursements that are presented in the reporting?
Um, Madam Mayor and members of the council, actually staff is really excited to bring this forward. Uh, enthused is probably an equally appropriate word to use as well. Unfortunately, where we stand in terms of the actual document, the, the loan agreements, uh, they're not yet complete. Uh, so what we didn't wanna do is bring forward a document that wasn't in, uh, substantially its final form. So that is the reason for the continuance. Um, but because this was publicly noticed, um, it's something that we, uh, at least for the purpose of the public hearing, uh, the goal was to have the item on the agenda so we can respect the public hearing process, conduct the public hearing, and then bring it back, uh, at a later date when we are closer to complete with the, the actual loan agreements. Uh, I can tell you this project is something that we've worked closely with, uh, the, the county of San Bernardino on. Um, as it's been identified, it's intended to be 32 units, uh, to serve the chronically homeless. Uh, but in addition to serving as a housing opportunity for those that are chronically homeless, uh, it's also intended to include mental health, drug counseling, um, employment assistance, case management, and physical health screening. So we actually are looking forward to this being completed. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we had worked on that actually took some time to get to this point, ideally the funding would have been earlier in the process. Uh, but we did have to go through in identifying the actual funding source. And the ideal funding source staff identified for this were our neighborhood stabilization program funds. Uh, we did have to work with, I believe it was HUD, to, to make sure that those funds could be used for this type of a project. And that was a process in itself. Uh, but we did get the consent and modified our program rules so that those funds could be applied towards this project. So, uh, with that being said, um, really the only real reason is, um, that the documents aren't complete. As to the amount of money, um, we, uh, we were presented this project by county early on in the process. Um, and it was identified as a fiscally constrained, uh, project. They're looking for as much resource as possible. We definitely wanted to, to be a part of it and, and, and believing that we had funds able to do it, um, i- is why this project moved forward with the anticipation at some later date, we would actually have funds that would actually serve to facilitate their acquisition of the real estate. Uh, the county through its housing authority is still responsible for completing the, the financing for the vertical element, which is the actual reconstruction of the former Queens motel. And then eventually securing the, the requisite funding to actually fund, uh, those aforementioned services. Uh, so with that, um, that's, I think that may be helpful. I can be available for any additional questions you might have.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, it'd be appropriate to open the public.
I do have one question, if I may, Madam Mayor. Thank you. On this particular project, isn't some of this going to be covered with grant funding? From the, was it from the county? That was my understanding when I?
That's correct. So some of the ongoing operational costs will be covered with, um, basically prorated rent from the individuals. Uh, this 1.5 million dollars being, um, that will be considered, um, at the next council meeting would actually be to, uh, will be used as money to replace the original, um, acquisition costs of the property so that those funds could then be freed up for another county project.
Great. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have some speaker cards. Uh, the first one is Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good afternoon. Wonderful idea of providing housing for the, the most needed, for the homeless, chronically homeless. My question is, uh, uh, the housing authority by Maria Rosso is, uh, is buying this property. It says, uh, has an initial cost of $3 million. Uh, it's 31 units, uh, seven studio apartments. And, uh, it has, like I said, it has a cost of $3 million that incurred the cost of the property. The city is, uh, asking to spend, well, it's gonna spend $1,509,505. And in the backup materials, there's nothing. And in the backup materials, there's nothing to say exactly how that money's going to be spent, what the money's going to be used for. I have another agenda items, and we have 140 pages of stuff that tells you in detail what's going to happen. But this, how is the $1,509,505 going to be used for? Since the housing authority is purchasing the property, I imagine we should have the courtesy of having everything itemized and how the money is going to be spent. Also, it's going to be subsidized. What is actually the cost? They say it's going to be prorated, but prorated to what? Is it going to be a lottery? Who is actually going to be in charge? But most than everything else is just the money that's being signaled here and printed on this proposal of $1 million, $1.5 million. I said for us, for the people to know exactly how that money is going to be spent on what, if for the purchase or for the renovation of the units. Thank you very much.
That was the only card that I had on this item here. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we continue the public hearing to the October 1, 2019, City Council meeting.
Correct. This will be continued to October 1, 2019.
There was a motion. Is that a second?
Yeah, second.
A motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Items C1 through C10 may be approved with one motion unless there is a council member request an item to be pulled for further discussion.
Yes, item C1, four and five. That's my motion to pull C1, C4 and C5. All the others can be with one motion consumed or approved.
Sure, Madam Mayor, I can certainly venture, excuse me, a motion. So I move that the council and/or the various boards of directors take action in accordance with items C1 through C10 according to the recommendations set forth on the agenda, with the exceptions of C1, C4, and C5, which we pull for separate consideration.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
So for item C1, we're dealing with the establishment of zones, speed zones, in relation to ordinance number 2394, amendments to the municipal code to decrease state law maximum speeds of various streets. And I wanted to make comment on this one. In the last meeting, or perhaps two meetings ago, I'd requested documentation to analyze together with the actual two comparison, different meetings with the same documentation that would help me scrutinize and look at what we were doing. However, it wasn't produced with the information. So it was very difficult to gather the information and make an analysis that I think is best for the people. I have it today. It wasn't together as I had wished I'd done. I wish there's more cooperation from administrations, particularly the city manager. For items C4 and C5, the same question is relational. For those two, since the payroll out of the new furlough, there's an increase of payroll expenditures, same with our vendors. What, in anticipation with the CFO, what are you anticipating being the percentage and the dollar amount that we're going to be seeing increase with administration? And now that we've already incorporated the lack, no more furlough days for 36 to 40 hours? So I want to see if there's a percentage that has been increased. What has that percentage been? And can it be pointed out to council at this level?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, I think the first opportunity to have already seen that was in the actual budget. And it actually calls it out fairly easily year over year, because in this fiscal year, this was our first year for which we eliminated the furloughs. There was a 10% increase in the salary to non-leadership and executive employees. So the budget in itself would be the first and the easiest place to identify that. Everything that's approved in these commercial demands and payroll, since we're particularly speaking to payroll, that would already incorporate that increase. And because it's budgeted and this is being approved in accord with the budget, you're probably not going to see it here. The budget is the best location to find that information.
I'm not satisfied with the response. I know that 10% is obvious. I've asked for a dollar amount. So is that, right now, our current payroll is at 1.3 million?
You have 30 seconds.
Our current commercial demand is 4.3 million. So I was looking more at that a dollar figure. And do we have that? So, or you just want me to calculate 10% and then? Because I'm really asking for assistance here. If you have that figure, CFO, I know he's quick with his numbers and financial management.
Madam Mayor and members of the council will be glad as staff to reproduce those documents and share them with you as a council and Councilmember Gomez.
And please make sure that layman's terms you pointed out and all that, not just produce the budget. Because I have the budget with me, and it just, it's not simply pointed out. It's a document that's very hefty as well. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Question. I would like to address this idea of payroll. Isn't it not that every employee has a stated income? The only difference that I always see is the question of the vendors. But everything else, it has already been accounted by the general budget. Is this not true? City Manager?
I'll defer to the treasurer.
I want to know that the question regarding payoff or the payroll is that the difference is because of vendors, not because of employees. Employees receive the same stated amount every week. And so the question is, if there is a difference, is the question of purchases that are not necessarily accounted as a weekly or monthly budget item?
Madam Mayor, City Council, I think I understand the question. So in essence, what is being presented with the payroll warrant could easily be calculated as 1/26 of the total amount that was appropriated at budget time for payroll. And so as we construct that budget and present it to you in June, we anticipate the number of employees that we have hired, the salaries that they make, any other ramped up associated costs related to payroll, as well as we make assumptions as to how much vacation time they're going to use, how much sick time they're going to use, and as well as covering all of their retirement costs and so forth. So all of that is done in an aggregate form at the time the budget is created. And what you are approving every council meeting are, is essentially 1/26, because there's 26 pay periods in the year. You're approving 1/26 of what was approved at the budget time. So hopefully that makes sense. And to answer the question on the commercial demand, that will fluctuate and vary from week to week, depending on the activities that our vendors have on a monthly basis.
The only reason I ask this question is for clarification. That in regards to the payroll demand schedule that we approve is the question that, being that we are members of the city council, we have the final approval to make certain that everything is correct and proper and actually itemized as it should be. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I ended up with one card here. Item C1, Ramiro Rodriguez.
I know this was brought up prior about the speed zone changes. It's just that word decrease. If you can just clarify, if there's going to be any decreases in the maximum speed limits? Are they going to be reduced? Are they being raised? Are they being changed? Are they being lowered or raised? Or are they going to stay as is? That's my question. Because there's certain places that, some of these maps on your GPS, Waze, and they tell you exactly what the speed limit is. So you go by your phone. So if the city changes those speed zones, lowers them, if it raises them, no problem. But if it lowers them, and on GPS it's on there, that your speed is 40, and the city said, you know, it's going to be 35 now. That's my question. That's the only reason I'm bringing this up, because everybody drives by their GPS now. And that's very important, the speed you're traveling. And a lot of these applications are very, very precise and tell you exactly, even warn you when you're speeding. So it's important to find out if there's any changes in lowering which could enact some sort of fine for speeding. Thank you.
Now we move on to?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I believe we need to take action on the pulled items.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, so I move that the council and boards of directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda for items C1, four and five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. There is no Brown Act violation where there's an agenda item that's been agendized, and we have public comment, and we have a question. I'm just not sure if we're waiting for the chair or the presiding chair to give direction to administration, or if one of the council members would like to just quickly address the question. But I don't think leaving a public commenter hanging, when they have the right to have a response from council, is something that we want to project as the lack of customer service, because we're trying to provide customer service in terms of abiding by our policies. And I've noticed that at the moment. So if I may, I'm not going to explain, but just briefly read the decrease of state law maximum-minimums, which just at its forefront is stating that whatever maximum state law says that's going to occur, the city of Victorville has decided to make it lower than. But I can respond to your question, I cannot respond to your question in terms of how will that affect when we're using programs like Waze or any other applications that would be up to administration and the chair to actually want to be able to address that question.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, so as to try to bring clarity to this item, and our city engineer can fill in the blanks where I may, may not do a good enough job answering. But this particular item, despite the title where it says decrease of state maximum speed, it's a technical reference. This item particularly is dealing with the second reading associated with what we do annually, which is assess and determine the appropriateness in changing speeds throughout our thoroughfares in the city. And on August 20th, that was the first opportunity where we had the first reading of this ordinance. That was the time where we actually had the more detailed information, which among all the streets identified, of them all, six stretches where there's actually speed limit changes. All six of them are actually increasing slightly, either five or 10 miles per hour. Those road stretches start, the first one is on Bear Valley Road between Mona Vista Road and Highway 395. The second stretch is Bear Valley Road, again, between Appetite and Spring Valley Lake Parkway. The third is Asporia Road between the stretches of Nisqually Road to Verdi Street. The fourth one is Phantom Road East. That's from Perimeter Road to Nevada Avenue. The next, the fifth one is Phantom Road West, which is the stretch of Eric Expressway to Nevada. And then the sixth one is Reno Loop, the north side of Reno Loop, between the stretch of Hook to East Trail. All of that information was contained in the August 20th staff report. It might sound misleading in the recommendation, the actual quoted language, decrease of state law maximum speed on various streets. I'll allow Mr. Gangler, the city engineer, to address that.
So the reason that it's referred to as a decrease in state law maximum speed on various streets, it's consistent with the California Vehicle Code, which sets certain, they call them prima facia speed limits. There are automatic speed limits if you don't do a speed survey. And so for many roads, the automatic speed limit would be 55, as an example. So for many of these streets, it'd be reducing the automatic speed of 55 to whatever speed we set based on a speed survey. So that's why it's called a decrease. But we're not actually, there are no streets with this change that are, we're actually lowering the speed limits. Either they're staying the same, or the six streets that Mr. Metzler just noted will increase.
Excuse me, but this is a law that has to be enforced, and it is done by formula. It's not done by arbitrary decisions, correct?
Yes, it's based on a speed survey consistent with the vehicle code.
Thank you.
I hope that answers the questions. Thank you so much.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Cox being absent.
I'm on written communications now, right?
I'm sorry.
Written communications, that's what I meant. So now we move on to written communications. Item D1. Support of 2020 U.S. Census and Complete Count Committee. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-074, Recognizing the Importance of the 2020 U.S. Census and Supporting a Complete, Fair, and Accurate Count of All Californians.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff? Too many time limit.
Madam Mayor, I'll defer until I hear the presentation. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. What is the contact information for those U.S. Census staff who meet with city staff? I don't have everyone's information. I just got one card. So you know what? I'll just use this one card, so I don't need a response. So it looks like staff prepped the list and the GIS map layers for SCAG. How exactly is that being used with nonprofit NGOs and faith-based organizations? What are the dates and times and locations that the IE Census Committee will be meeting? And tell me a little bit more about city-related efforts without referring to the report, since it is missing specific details. For example, the updates, what does that mean? Assuming that there's already notifications. What city events are being pre-planned? Are there dates and times already? Will staff be providing updates as city efforts progress? If so, when and where will they be delivered to the City Council? Your staff.
We hear about the census, and people are very fearful because of the fact that there was a possibility of an immigration question, which has now been unconstitutionally declared. However, I would like for everyone to understand the positive impact of not having it. Because when we do it, it means more money for the city, more money for programs within the city, and also the recognition of the population growth that we have. So in an overall positive effect, actually, the census is doing us a great good if people would understand and not be threatened by the unknown. So I would like that in your presentation, you make that statement, so that those who may not understand the purpose of the census will understand that by them answering, they are helping us at the city, as well as their next-door neighbor and themselves. Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, if I can introduce the speaker and see if he can address some of the questions that were asked by the council members, and if there are any left unaddressed, then I can answer those at the end.
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Okay. Mr. Andreas Castillo, he is a partnership specialist from the U.S. Census Bureau. He also has two additional partnership specialists with him in the audience, two of which staff met with more recently. He's going to give a brief overview, and then we'll answer any questions afterwards.
Very well.
Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. First of all, thank you for allowing the Census Bureau First of all, thank you for allowing the Census Bureau to do a presentation, a small synopsis, a snapshot of what's going on with the census and why it's so important. So I have a little bit of time just to give you a brief overview. So the census is nothing more than getting everybody, everyone in the community counted. This is an important event because this is how redistricting gets done. Also, the House of Representatives, there's four hundred and thirty-five seats. And then fifty-three of the seats belong to California. So the more people get counted, the more representation the House of Representatives will have for California. Also, there's six hundred and more, excuse me, let me, let me restate that. More than $675 billion that are on the table that's going to be distributed within, in the next ten years, every year for the next ten years. So this is important not only for the Census Bureau, but especially for each community. There's already many communities being established. They establish their CCCs, which is a Complete Count Committee. We have Moncler, the city of Moncler, the city of Chino, Riverside, San Bernardino, all these cities are getting on board. In the high desert, we have Twenty-Nine Palms, Yucca Valley, they're being contacted. Even the cities of Needles, which is on the outskirts of, close to, to the state line. So all these cities are being, they're important for the complete count of California. And of course, this means representation. It's about the power, but also means the money that's coming. Because the cities are growing. And we know there's skepticism, there's fear that the citizenship question will be deemed unnecessary. And it's going to put a lot of people in, in fear. But we're here to tell you that as a Census Bureau, we take people's confidentiality very serious. As a matter of fact, us as partnership specialists, we take a life oath that we're not to disclose any information about anyone. The only thing that's presented to the president and at the end of 2020 is going to be the numbers. And it's just statistics. And this is to, to really get a snapshot of what the country, the population of the country. There are many other things, of course, that I can go into detail. I don't have enough time, but I'm open for questions at this time.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Well, I, I don't know if I have questions because I think we're going to hear more from Sophie Smith. But first of all, thank you so very much for taking the time to come to our city and inform us more about what the purpose of the census is and how it can certainly improve things for California and our, and our communities more locally. Really appreciate you being here. It's, it's important to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Formerly, I was asking the initial question is, we have, in the city of Victorville, areas that are below the federal poverty level, very, very low income. And you have three to four families in a household. With that stated, you'll just probably have one person that is the property owner. And that's the person who either perhaps lives or doesn't live on the property, gets the information, but doesn't relate to the rest of the constituency within that household. So I see it very difficult for that communication to be established because if this decentennial consistently occurs every so often, every ten years, it's not something that is at the forefront of communities specifically because communities aren't seeing that as a dollar bill more for the social programs that they need to have. Instead, they're looking at it as a ramification for displaying information for a government entity that is perhaps not on the side of keeping their information confidential. This is the first time that I've heard you state only statistical numbers and not addresses or anything of that nature would be supplied. But how do you supply that information to the masses when 75% is going to be online? And we don't have a Wi-Fi, anything. And that's very difficult for our poor communities.
And I understand your concern. As a matter of fact, the Census Bureau is working very hard. They have statistical methods that I don't even understand. But of course, they have individuals who are experts at the statistics. And they are ensuring that the numbers presented, it's all numbers. And, and the main objective for the census is to really count those who are historically have been underrepresented. And we're talking about years. And so these are normally children under the age of five, certain age groups. We have minorities and also renters, people that move from one place to another. So we understand the concern about maybe three or four families living in one situation that does cause concern. But this is why establishing the Complete Count Committee right now and moving forward and, and letting the population know that this is a safe event, that they can do their research, that they can reach out to, to, to your trusted voices, to letting them know that this is a safe, it's important. And not only that, but it's also easy. So by communicating with the constituents, it will make the process a lot smoother. It will bring the trust back to the people.
Well, I happen to know that presently, we report 125,000 population within our city. But I work with the Hispanic community. I have been working with them for 42 years. And a lot of it is just trying to assist in whatever way that I can. It has nothing to do with money. And I happen to know that there are at least 10,000 that are not counted. And even though we say 125, I always say 135, possibly more. Because I'm just going Victorville and we have the surrounding areas. But I know they're not counted, you know? So hopefully through this, the better educated we are and the better we understand it, the better we can help them understand that it's not going to harm them in any way. So I'm here to assist in any way that I can.
Thank you, Mayor.
I appreciate all the information you have given us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
One more question. Because of the Privacy Act, I know that you're not able or will not be able to give out confidential information. However, there are many people who still do not have English as their only language and may not feel comfortable in, in answering in English. Will you have individuals that would meet the language barrier? Because in many cases, when you travel, as I've noticed here.
You have 30 seconds.
We have many who speak Spanish and many who are Asian.
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, to answer your question, there are, there's, besides the English language being provided with the questionnaire, there's also 12 languages being available to the, to the public. Besides that, there's also 59 other languages that are going to be implemented for videos and media so that people get, get acquainted and feel safe about the information they're providing. So to answer your question, yes, there is avenues that the census will provide to also promote other languages so they can be, they can be counted.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think that's all the questions that we have.
Thank you. I do have, I do have some more additional information and just a little goodie bag that I would like to distribute to the council. If that's okay.
Thank you.
And if I could just make one more request. Okay.
City clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Distribute it. One more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the churches going to get involved in trying to assist the families in understanding about the census and all that?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the churches, any faith-based community organization, any non-based community organization, anyone is invited. Everyone is invited, even businesses, small businesses. Everyone is invited to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may ask, just a small request, and I know this is going to be, but as a courtesy, we like to have a report done to the Census Bureau. And normally, we usually request of a picture. Would that be too much trouble to have a picture with you? I can just stand there and we just, that'll be fine? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. On behalf of the U.S. Census Bureau, we really appreciate your, your cooperation. And we just want to ensure that we're working very diligently to ensure that everyone in, in the, the city of Victorville gets counted once, only once, and in the right place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you very much. I do have one speaker card. Maggie Martin.
Good evening, Your Honor, counsel. Can you hear me? I really, really did not wanted to speak on this topic because it's, it's a sensitive talk, topic. But I appreciate the gentleman being here from the U.S. Census Bureau. First of all, I do need to say this before I forget. Couple of months ago, Mr. Rodriguez, Ramiro Rodriguez was up here. And he was talking about that the Hispanic community was not well-represented in terms of the census. And then my response that evening after the, after his comment was, this, or maybe the next meeting is this is a man who doesn't even trust in the U.S. Census to do their job. Okay, so I read the backup material on this. And I, I absolutely owe Mr. Rodriguez an apology. Because my thinking's old school. We're still going door-to-door, you know, like back in the seventies. And that's how the census was conducted. And I guess to a larger extent, it still is. But, you know, there were, but his focus is on the Hispanic community. And there's so many other groups that are not representative. So I hope he will accept my apology on, on that score. But when I first read the agenda and I saw that it says to blah, 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 I don't have it in front of me, make sure that every Californian is counted. This is immediately what popped into my mind. What qualifies a person as a Californian? So this is just my take on it. If I am a legal resident of California, then I'm a Californian. If I moved to Texas, changed my driver's license, what have you, worked there, lived there, eat there, tax there, get taxed there, then I'm a resident and have a driver's license there. And I'm a resident of that state. And so never in my mind, taking my eye off the big picture, which, which, which this is really all about is money and politics and how the city's going to get money, the county's going to get money, and throughout the state, their, their fair apportionment of that. But I, and then it's also more a step beyond that, who's going to win a seat in Sacramento? You know, or in, in redistricting. And you know, I, I hate to say it, and I know many people back here are going to take a breath. But I, I have a problem counting people in our census that have no lawful right to be here. That's, that's it, and that's all. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had. Do we need a motion on this item? I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion that the city council accept and be a part of the census of 2020.
Second.
So as a point over for clarification, that's staff recommendation, right? It's not deviating from it?
That, thank you for that, Councilmember Gomez, because that was going to be my question too. Because it's to, the recommendation is, is in fact to adopt the Resolution 19-074. So as long as that becomes part of the motion, I, I would be in favor of it.
So have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia, to adopt the Resolution Number 19-074. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
We move on to item D2. Award of Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement to EVO Training Institute and for Electrical Safety Program Consulting Services and Training. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt Resolution Number 19-072, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Approve a Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement for Electrical Safety Program Consulting Services, Project ESC 20-026, in the amount not to exceed $59,000 and appropriate, 50, appropriate $59,000 from the VEMUS Electrical Fund.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. May I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. So on this particular item, it looks like OSHA requires this type of work every three, three years. And it appears it wasn't caught during the budget appropriation process this past June. Could you help me with that, Mr. Metzler?
Yeah, and in fact, I think our Director of Utilities, Michael Tenek, can offer some greater detail than I can offer. But this is something that had traditionally been internalized. And we're, we've been aware of the requirements, but we also are aware or have become aware that there likely is a need to formalize more professionally the, the training that we're offering and have it standardized. So with that, this has come after the fact and therefore, we've gone through the process to identify and consider an, an entity that can perform those services for us and likely help us pass an audit, presuming we do get an audit. But with that, Mr. Tenek, is there anything more to add on this?
Most of the, the programs that we're looking at, we already have those. They're just not in a consolidated program. Should there ever be an industrial accident on VEMUS's site, VEMUS's workers, there's never been one. The first thing OSHA does is let's see your document. And we like to incorporate it into a standalone document, just, and go through and review it just to make sure we've caught up to everything and everything's good. We already have all these programs. We just need somebody to go through and verify that everything's up to code, so.
Okay, and then on page two of the contract, Section 6, under the term of agreement, it says that it commences on September 1. Is this going to be adjusted accordingly before signatures?
No, I couldn't hear you.
I know, he didn't hear you.
Oh, I am s- You know what? This is an ongoing issue with me. People have a difficult time hearing me. All right. So on page two of the contract, Section 6, under the term of agreement, it says that it commences on September 1. Will that date be adjusted accordingly?
We'll adjust that to October 1.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Yes. OSHA, OSHA requires you to do this program. May I ask, how long have we had a contract with this particular company? And how noted is it? I know that in the information I have, it will be audited, I think, at the end of three years to make sure that it's in compliance. And so this is a question of public safety as well as efficiency. But how well do we know the company that does the, this training?
Yeah, this company's been around for, I believe, like 50 years. And they do, they're nationally certified to do all this stuff for high-voltage electrical kind of stuff that we, we operate with, so. And they're usually multiple different agencies for their training. So we use them for specific training for cable splicing and that kind of stuff and working on live, high-voltage wires. So they've, they've been around a long time and they're nationally recognized as one of the trainers.
So we are talking about experts in the field, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So D2. What was the purpose of this consultation? What was staff knowledge of the need and the knowledge that was available? Why wasn't it added to the budget workshop or in the recent June budget adoption? How much money is currently being funded from Fund 420, the VEMUS account?
As I've been with the city for about a year, I've been going through all the policies and procedures. And we had all these documents and we, we didn't put it in the budget because at that time, we were still looking at what we're going to be doing and who we're going to be using. We didn't know the final cost and so.
Okay, so no costs were noted, but it was anticipated that the city knew that there would be a cost. Was that even a part of the conversation, whether it was through the budget or any conversation at a public meeting?
I'm sorry? I get the question.
Right, so it wasn't presented at the budget. But I'm presuming that this was something pre-anticipated. pre-anticipated in terms of council could have had some awareness or some knowledge before today? And if it wasn't, what was the cost, what was the decision for not alerting the city council in a public meeting for such a decision? I just want to make sure the finances and all that balance.
Like I said, mostly the city departments already has all these programs in place. This is just going through and having somebody audit our information and put together a single document that's standalone, so.
But there was knowledge, it's just an ongoing process. I just presume it's something new, and I felt like I was left out of the loop.
It's not something new, it's something we do continually. This will just, somebody go through and audit all of our policies and procedures.
And do we know how much our current Fund 420 has for VEMUS?
I'm sorry?
The current funding that we have up to date for 420?
Yeah, I think the fund balance on 420 is approximately $4 million.
Yeah, it's got sufficient funding.
And I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the city council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda, specifically items, points 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. I've asked as a councilmember to be informed specifically of certain agenda items. The city manager has blatantly rejected through perceived discretionary powers to do so, and this administration needs the manager to buckle down and start informing publicly and through ongoing meetings what is really transpiring behind the halls of City Hall. And I'm troubled because this council approved a settlement related to contractual ambiguities and recently increased the VEMUS customer fees, and now this council is being asked to approve consulting fees and the purchase of two transformers. However, I understand what is needed. I understand that is now procedural. It just really bothers me that I have to come to a level of where this is needed, but what was not needed prior was something that was not addressed. And I understand that the need for training our employees in compliance is very needed.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Request to purchase two redundant transformers from ABB Inc., C.O. Pacific Utilities. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the purchase of two redundant transformers from ABB Incorporated Care of Pacific Utilities in the amount of $91,200 to help ensure continuous electric services to Victorville Municipal Utility Services customers.
Thank you. Counselmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
The same sentiment as the prior one. It was like a combo for me, item D2 and D3, so the same sentiment gets relayed. Just bothered that the information doesn't come forthcoming very publicly, so I would hope that from now on, we start getting more information publicly, and that's related to VEMUS, as my understanding has been.
Item D3 is a budgeted item. We're just asking permission to actually pick care of them, so.
The purchase of two transformers?
Yeah, that's a budgeted item.
My thing is just, I'm looking at the organization as VEMUS, but I understand that transformers are a must, a redundant transformer is a must, too. But it's just, as a public official, I want to make sure that it's on the record that it does bother me that we don't have information. Staff gets it all, but council has to make a decision on sometimes something blank. And not being an engineer or someone that's very vested in VEMUS and how it functions, I think as a public official, I need to at least understand some of the dynamic as to what's occurring. So when I'm asked of a question, I can intellectually provide even a resource for the people to understand. So it's nothing against you, sir. It's my grunt, disgruntle happens to be to the city manager, not to you, so please don't take offense to that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the comment from Councilmember Gomez is certainly inaccurate, especially as it relates to the disclosure of the information. In fact, I'm fairly confident that despite the slight oversight, perhaps that's what it was, in the last item to where we did not include the item in the budget, staff prides itself on being very forthcoming, forward, probably overly diligent when it comes to disclosing things in staff reports. So I think certainly our track record in disclosing the information in the staff reports, providing backup information, the constant and recurring meetings we have, conversations, staff is more than forthcoming, including myself, with the information to help support your decision-making process.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I understand that the purchase of both are needed for one as a follow-up, or if one breaks down, the other one is available. What is the life expectancy of these transformers?
In the current ones that we have? The ones that we're looking at replacing can basically feed any of our customers, and our life expectancy for a transformer is 20 to 25 years, and the ones that are out there now are about 15 years old, so.
Thank you. I think those are where all the questions that we had. Okay, let's see. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the city council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Now we move on to item D4. Approve the execution of a developer-funded project to expand electric services located at 13364 Aerospace Drive. At this time, do councilmembers have any questions of staff?
Has the city purchased from this organization? I would presume so, but I'm not here to make guesses. It is a sole source, and that's my clue for that question.
Yeah, it's a sole source. We have standardized equipment that we use, and ABB Transformers and Equipment can only be bought from one place in this area, so.
And has the city purchased in the past these redundant types of transformers? If so, would you give me a brief understanding of if?
We have purchased transformers in the past, yes.
And in the amount, which is $91,000 about, what was the reason for staff not adding the following language to the item, "not to exceed"?
You're talking about item prior?
Yeah.
We're on item D4.
Okay, so then that was to the prior, I should have asked that beforehand. Okay, so who was Victorville's auditor prior to the contract being presented to council today, and how often is it updated? We're looking at an agreement.
Which agreement are you speaking of?
D4 Source Electrical Facilities Agreement to Expand Electrical.
D4, this is an agreement with the customer who wants to expand their services, and they're agreeing to pay for all the costs to expand their services, so.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
This customer's come to us because they'd like to expand their services that they're currently providing, and they're going to be funding the entire project. And we will be purchasing the transformers, they're going to fund it and give us the money for it, and then we'll purchase it and install the equipment, so.
And then the last question is, how long has each stretch of service been met through each amendment? This one's the one that's been amended, it's going to be the Fifth Amendment today if it passes, of course.
You're talking about the prior amendment, the prior?
I'm assuming that this is an agreement, and we're going to, it's probably not the first of its kind?
No, each agreement with developers or customers are individual to themselves. There is not a master agreement. Each one is tailored to the needs of the individual customer. It's called a facilities agreement.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, and just to bring focus on the item that we're actually on, which is D4, I think we're bobbing and weaving between D6, which is an amendment to the master plan, and then, of course, D3, which we'd already acted on, which was dealing with redundant transformers. I'd like to share with you a little bit of context on D4, and perhaps some of the confusion is because we're not used to dealing with this particular type of item, in large part because this typically, when it occurs, falls under the city manager's purchasing authority, and because it exceeds the $50,000 purchasing authority granted to the city manager is in large part why this is coming to you. So you're probably not used to seeing these, but the exciting part of what you're approving tonight is this involving a new customer at SCLA called Hydration Source. And not a lot different than the process any private development would go through, whether it's connecting to our service or, say, Southern California Edison Service. If you're going to build new or you're going to establish service, in this case, electrical service, the very common practice is for that user to pay a fee to the utility, in this case, VEMUS, so that it could develop a design. With that design, you establish a spec sheet as to the components necessary to be purchased, whether it's transformers, cabling, what have you, meters. All of that has to be paid for in advance of a user establishing service. And so the process that we're going through here is to where we've identified the needed components before service can be established to the actual business. So this item, through the facilities agreement, which is what we're approving, and that's Attachment Letter A, in fact, that is the document that actually establishes the relationship between our utility and the customer, so that if they want service by date certain, a number of things have to be done in advance, including the purchase of the equipment so that it's ready upon them opening their doors. So this is effectively establishing new service for Hydration Source, which is, what I understand, is a water, bottled water manufacturer that's going to be located adjacent to Plastipack and in the same building, separated by common wall with Arden Industries. 13B is the building number that we typically refer to.
Thank you.
I'd like to say yes, David. The question of this expansion actually is additional revenue to the city, is it not?
Yes, when they've come online, it'll be additional revenue to the city.
Oh, really? It's not a question of lost, but actually a profit? Is it not? The expenditure?
I'm sorry, catch the question.
The expenditure actually is a question of profit and not a question of loss.
Let me speak to the money side of it, if I can, first to be technically correct. The revenue generation is to the utility, the Victorville utility, so that's separate enterprise fund, and I want to make that distinction because that's completely different than, say, the general fund. And so the answer to the question is, in terms of sales revenue, sales revenue to the utility is very likely going to increase because the consumption from this user is going to be great. The money side of this particular item is intended to be effectively a net neutral cost to where the components in this item are prepaid by the developer. We take that money then to expand and buy these equipments. So this particular is a neutral, if you will, because the revenue come in is going to be expensed out ideally equally. But then, as to the income side, the revenue side, it should be, it will be positive to the utility. The one thing that I didn't add, which is where I think the city benefits on profits, you can call it that, even though there's no such thing as profit in government, I think where the city benefits positively is because of the addition of the new jobs. There's going to be quite a few new jobs brought along with this industry, and of course, I think you can expect resulting from that increased homeownership, perhaps, increased discretionary spending, and that's effectively how the city can generate revenue to fund some of the additional essential services.
Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve the execution of a developer-funded project.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, so the execution is related to a particular project as is stated in the recommendation, so I just want to make sure that that's the intent of the motion.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
I also have a comment. So in order to kind of shed light on what's happening, we always want to see all aspects, not just one aspect, and I think as a councilmember, I have my duty to be honest as an insider what I perceive to see as well. Everything is not lightly colored, but if a lot of you are following the city council and you look at a lot of the settlements that we end up spending, a lot of our taxpayer dollars, we would have noticed that Mars, I believe is Mars, there was a contractual ambiguity, and this has to do with VEMUS, which is what we're discussing right now. Those monies were pre-allocated and reapportioned from our taxpayer dollars, which really takes a hit on what we're doing. And so when we're saying that this potentially could be a profit or a benefit to the city, we also have to consider that in bringing some of these types of entities, it's to cover the costs of these settlements that have been done and gone with. But when we don't stack them up and scaffold them for the community to know if we really are balancing, we're taking into consideration our historical landscape to right now and how do our books look, but we just chop off the history and talk about right now and later, everything looks really colorful. So I just want to make sure that you understand that there has been contractual settlements with Mars that has to do with VEMUS, and that has affected. So I don't potentially see this as something as a greater benefit, but we're hoping that the gap in monies that were allocated would come from something like this.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think just to make sure that the record is clear, with that, Councilmember Gomez's comments are not entirely accurate, especially when speaking to the settlement that was referenced and referencing that as taxpayer money. I think I need to clear for the record that settlement that involved VEMUS involves user fees paid for by VEMUS customers, none of which are Victorville residents. All of the customers of VEMUS, about 63 or so of them, are all commercial industry out at the airport. We don't have any residential customers, and the fees that those customers pay are not taxes, they're actually user fees associated with an actual service that they're getting. So I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that councilmembers Gomez's comments are misleading at best when it comes to characterizing taxes and not clearly characterizing user fees.
And it's very interesting that you would clarify something like that, because if we do understand when we go into a mall and we pay something in the mall, eventually the corporation is the hand-down to you and I paying those purchases. So despite how you want to spin it or cover it or sugarcoat it, it ends up coming out from the pockets of the sustainability that we're trying to create in our very city of Victorville. So you choose how you want to see it, you can ask for documentation, good luck getting it, because I don't get it. But as an insider, I'm going to share honestly what I perceive to be. So whether it's fully inaccurate or all inaccurate or what is happening in politics, welcome to the world of politics.
Any further comments? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Now we move on to item D5. Underground Utility District in the area of Arrowhead Drive at Evansdale Way, southerly to 7th Avenue at Sitting Bull Street. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt resolution number 19-061, which schedules a public hearing for October 1st, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. to ascertain whether the public interest requires the formation of an underground utility district in the area of Arrowhead Drive at Evansdale Way, southerly to 7th Avenue at Sitting Bull Street.
Thank you. Counselmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Two-minute time limit.
If staff can address the following that was in the report, which is quote-unquote, "Schedules of Hearing October 1st, 2019 to ascertain whether the public interest..."
of hearing October 1st, 2019 to ascertain whether the public interest requires the information of an underground utility district in the area listed in the agenda." And the second question is, also please explain the fiscal impact in relation to the proposed underground utility district. Costing is no expense as opposed to an expense and the right to notify the public.
So basically, this is the first step in a process to establish an underground utility district on Arrowhead Drive and 7th Avenue. We have the procedure already set in our municipal code. And so this underground project would be, it's basically overhead electrical lines and there is also a communication line, and it would be coordinated with our street project that is planned along those same streets. So the next step after this would be to hold a public hearing, which is required according to our municipal code, to determine if the city council wants to proceed with forming this underground utility district. If that is formed at the next council meeting, then the process is that Southern California Edison basically designs the project, they construct the project, and they use their funds. The funds are in what is called a Rule 20A account, which is controlled by Southern California Edison. So there is no expense to the city of Victorville, but that money is set aside for projects like this. And then, yeah, in regard to the fiscal impact, so there really is no fiscal impact to the city of Victorville.
Then my next question is, has a project been out to bid, and what does the city market its bids to the public or organizations to participate? Where? The phrase "has been prepaid by Hydration Source LLC" appears often to be the reporting, I'm going to call it "organization." What does that refer to? I'm not understanding, and how is that related? Is it related to Fund 420? And is the Hydration Source a client with the account, or is it a product? What is this?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gomez's question is relating to the last item. Hydration Source was D4. We're on D5, dealing with the underground utility district.
So if you want to correct my questions, you need to understand that I do not have you guys helping me understand the process when I do set up an appointment with you. So my clarification is going to come right here, so if I'm going to involve hydration, you can clarify contextually if it's appropriate within the same means, because I see some of these relationals coming together and overlapping. I don't know, I want to distinguish it as separate. And so my questions still stand. What does the scope of this project entail? The installation of the infrastructure? There's that October meeting, I'm supposed, what I'm taking from all of this is somehow we want to not have the public know that we're doing this, and if that's not the case, that is what I'm seeking.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this particular item is quite to the contrary of not wanting the public to know. In fact, this is the first step in a very public process, actually seeking public input to decide if there's any support or opposition to our effort in applying to Southern California Edison in using Rule 20A money to underground certain electric utilities, in this particular case, along 7th Avenue and Arrowhead Drive. So this is a very public process for a project, as I understand it, that it becomes, if we do move forward, becomes an actual Edison project, is my understanding. So the bidding process, I'm sorry, the design process, the bidding process, the actual construction process, that would be all something that they would do under their purchasing rules and regulations. So that being said, that part, presuming we get past the public involvement process here, then the actual undergrounding and installation would become private through Southern California Edison.
Hope that answers questions. Anyone else?
Yes. To clarify this point, what you are doing or asking us is simply to approve a procedure so that there will be a public hearing to determine whether or not the, those above the ground should be removed and placed underground for public safety. Is this not so?
Yes, exactly.
And that would be the design that, or the approval that you would need, so that Southern California Edison would be able to formulate or form that particular design so that the electrical would go under the ground? But it is a procedure you're asking us to approve, so that this would be the initial step for that purpose?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember, do you have anything?
I have no questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have another question. There was a revision. My time wasn't up. I still have time available. No, you didn't hear that. So I wanted to know, there was a revision. How is that related to here?
The revision was Exhibit A, which is a map of the underground district.
So it was just an extension?
It's a map that identifies the limits of the project and the properties that are affected.
So in other words, I'm comparing two unequal maps, right?
Madam Mayor, if I might, I believe what you're seeing here is, and I think they're both related, I think the map that's in Attachment A in the actual published agenda, that's identifying a project area that is ultimately going to be the reconstruction of Arrowhead and 7th Avenue. That's, it looks to me to be the boundary limits for that entire reconstruction, roadway reconstruction effort. If we move forward with this process and actually apply for the Rule 20A money, the scope of that project is, as I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but that project limit is better defined in the handout Exhibit A. So saying it differently from what's in the agenda, that's a much larger project scope. Drilling down to the Exhibit A that's handed out, that's the project limit for where the undergrounding would occur. Is that right?
That's correct. The street project is about two miles long. The underground project is about one-quarter mile long.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt Resolution 19-061.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Item D6, Water Master Plan Update, Amendment Number 5. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve Amendment Number 5 to the Consultant Professional Services Agreement with Water Systems Consulting Incorporated in the amount of $34,950 for the Water Master Plan Update.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
We're on D6.
D6. I do not have any speaker cards on this item, therefore I need a motion in a second.
You know, I realize I think I do have questions, if I may. Is the Water Master Plan related to the MWA or the SEDARU agenda item, on Item 9, in any fashion?
No.
No, okay. Would you be able to explain the contract of $360,000 and the amendments that came thereafter? I'm not understanding the summary pricing amendments and the costs.
Sure. The original contract was for $360,835. Amendments 1 and 4 were just time extensions, so there was no cost. Amendment 2 was to add a component to the master plan to include a thorough evaluation of all of our water reservoirs, so that we could plan them in, in our rates, as far as their rehabilitations. And then Amendment 3 was just to analyze and include a new water main at Southern SCLA.
And the last question is, also, I'm not understanding, if you look at Attachment B, it's this description on the scope, for instance, this is a million-dollar cost per area, and the $54 million along with the approximate $6.5 million yearly allocated for the CIP project.
I'm not seeing that.
No, you know what? You're right, that's not in this one. So let me go back to what you just stated with the summary pricing. There's a specific clause with accordance to Victorville Municipal Code, and I, you explained the original contract, but I wasn't sure why we had the $50,000 or the 15% of the original contract price. So I assume that the $4,300 was a 15% rather than $50,000? I mean, how is that working?
I believe Amendments 2 or 3 were within the city manager's authority to approve, so I don't believe they came to council. This latest amendment, I believe, pushes it above.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that? I could barely hear you.
I believe that Amendments 2 and 3 were under the city manager's authority to sign, and with this additional one, I think that goes over its authority.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else? Need a motion in a second?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Now we move on to D7, Crime and Violence Report. Any action is at the discretion of the city council. Mayor Pro Tam Ramirez will present this item.
Yes, I would like to comment on this. I know that the chart is describing numbers. However, when I requested a report, I was hoping on a written report, because I would like to know the insight of the department. In other words, I want to know what they think and what they see and how they interpret these numbers. I was also wanting to know the impact of crime in the city of Victorville. Why? Because the constant complaint that I received in emails is that crime is on the rise and that we, the city of Victorville, the city council, is doing nothing about it. And if you remember, I felt that we should have additional law enforcement officers, and I agreed with the department. They said no, and I said, fine. I still feel very strongly about having additional law enforcement officers on the street or in cars or wherever because of crime. But one of the things that I find fault with this is that demographics does not tell me the true picture. I would have liked and wanted it in words, especially because if crime is on the rise, and this city of Victorville is 52, 53% Hispanic by population, I do not want to see our city in any way affected by those on the outside, such as in Texas, El Paso, and what happened at Walmart. I want to know, what is the police department going to do if we have such an individual come into our city? And how are they going to protect us? What should we do? Because it would be nice to know what the law enforcement department would feel that residents should be aware of and how they should take care of themselves. I'm concerned with public health and public safety, and the numbers are wonderful. I see that there was a reduction in crime, violent crime, okay? However, that was some time ago. It isn't today, and it may not be tomorrow. And so the only thing that I would like to say is, first, I thank you for the demographics, but I would have also, would have liked to seen words. I would like to see the thinking of our department and how they perceive that they should protect all the residents of the city of Victorville. Because until you know it in words, we are all second-guessing the intent. And I am not here to guess. I am here to represent and protect everyone. And if we can avoid a crisis, then it's our job to make certain that we request a pre-plan. What should we do if we have a crazy person out there wanting to kill our residents? And so that's the only fault that I find, but I do thank the department for the demographics.
I think Councilmember Gomez wishes to speak.
Yes. What were the reports for incidents where law enforcement officers fired a gun at a person regardless of whether someone was hit or used force that resulted in serious injury or death, whether the department thought that the officer acted appropriately or not?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, not trying to get too off-topic from what was asked for by this council of staff, the specific direction of council was to bring back a report on activity, and in fact, that's what we did here in this particular item. If the council is desirous of something more than the statistical report that has actually been updated, in fact, the chief has a little bit more of an update as to the calls of service data, that's all that was understood as being asked for the council back on August 6, when this item was brought before you. So this item is really intended to be responsive to that August 6 request, which is showing you statistical trends for calls of service. As to the particular case that Councilmember Gomez is speaking to, not going to speak for the police chief, because he's got much more elegant words than I do when it comes to these matters, but I'm not familiar with the particular case that she's talking about, and even if there was a particular case, it's likely for legal reasons, it's not something to be discussed publicly.
The second question is, how many incidents and records related to officers committing sexual assault against a member of the public, which includes attempts to coerce sexually or propositions of sex while on duty were founded on this, were found on this agency? I'll be asking for a public records request if I don't get any responses.
Those are released, those are released by the department in reference to this research on this. This was not what was requested, so I did not do that research.
Looking at the reporting city of Victorville crimes reported, crime is whether an officer does it or the general public. My third question is, what records related to incidents were found where the agency found that an officer engaged in dishonesty in the investigation, reporting, or prosecution of a crime of police misconduct? That kind of dishonesty could include finding a false report, testifying untruthfully, or planting evidence?
I did not do the research for that on this. I believe you're referring to the recent law, and I'm trying to look it up now, I think it was 1421?
Yes.
Senate Bill 1421, where specific items are required to be released by agencies, and it's outlaw, I'm sorry, outlined in that Senate bill. The department is complying with that and has recently released various accounts that are required for that bill. So you can go on our department website and contact our department, and that information will be released as it's supposed to be by law. I don't, I didn't research it for this, because that's not what I believe the intent was.
And the last question is, what other records were found by the agency where officers were found guilty of misconduct and violation of policies? Whether the time to, whether it was a time to appeal that determined, that had determined, had actually passed? And yes, you're right, is on that bill? And these, all my questions are regarding to that bill, so I'm happy that you're on top of that. It does really show that you're at least paying attention to bills that really affect the community and our police officer's force.
The other item I just wanted to bring up, because in reference to the crime statistics, it shows year-to-date the station activity, the call volume. This was initially done probably approximately a month ago, when we were prepared for the prior city council meeting, and was continued. And on that, it shows total call volume of 88,630. As of this afternoon, I pulled our call volume. Our call volume year-to-date is 102,528 calls we've responded to or initiated, and our total deputy reports is 8,854 reports we've taken year-to-date. And in reference to... And in reference to any questions about the statistics, I'm more than happy to discuss them further if you wanted to meet or discuss some of the items here in reference to how you were kind of wanting an idea of what our thought process is behind it. I do understand that. In reference to, if you do look at the crime reported, this is the, um, this is our uniform crime reporting statistics that we report to the FBI and the California Department of Justice. So as you can see at the end of the statistics here, you can see we do a comparison from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. And that's where I think you said like you saw a little bit of a reduction. I would like to draw your attention, however, to the comparison that's just left of that, which is two thousand fourteen to two thousand eighteen. As you look at that on the violent crimes part one, you can actually see over that timeframe, they've actually increased. And those are some of our concerns. We're hoping the downward trend continues, but, um, just to kind of show you where our thought process was a little bit on that, that's why we pull these numbers, to try to get an idea of what's going on in the community and how we can better and appropriately deploy our, our resources to try to use those. Uh, and which you were talking about earlier when we were talking about personnel and full-time employees and how we're looking at going with some technology side of the house to try to help with the enforcement aspects with your police department, keeping in mind the fiscal impacts of full-time employees in any department or division.
I personally would appreciate a written report only because of the fact, you know, that I keep having people attack me on the fact that I agreed with the department on the technology. And they called me stupid, foolish, and other words because of we did not have additional officers. I agreed with you because you are the expert, and I felt that you knew exactly what your needs were. However, I still believe that I would personally would like a written report because then I have proof of what I've said and where we stand as a city and as a department of law enforcement in regards to public safety. I think that the public needs to understand that we are here for them just as much as you are for us. And I would like to see that in a written report, and I would appreciate it very much.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might just add to that, and I think there's a comparison being drawn to the technology that we, uh, we considered and approved as a part of the budget. Uh, we did approve, I believe it was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in the budget that was appropriated out of the general fund to invest in a technology that we identified as ALPR. And, uh, those are automated license plate reader, readers. They're a camera technology that gets affixed, um, primarily to signals, but could be affixed to vehicles. It could be affixed to street sweepers. And it's something that we've been advancing. Uh, I, I'm not sure the, the last update that I've given the council, but I can share with you that we have been moving that agenda forward. We've had internal meeting with the vendor that the county relies on in other jurisdictions to deploy this technology. Uh, both myself and the police chief were up in the air on Friday, in fact, um, looking at particular locations from an aerial perspective as to what are the best, um, locations, um, throughout our city to, um, at least start. Because that's one of the hardest questions that we're running into is where do we start? If, if we're trying to use these tools and technology to more quickly, um, solve crimes? And, and that's why we've taken the position, despite any criticisms you may be getting, uh, both the chief and I would argue on your behalf that this technology is, is the most prudent considering the police force that we do have currently, the responsiveness that we do have currently. What we believe is that we can actually become even more effective and more efficient by using this in ALPR technology that you've agreed to invest in. We're furthering that agenda. Um, now that we've got an aerial perspective of where to start, we're working with the city engineer. We'll have to work likely with Caltrans as well to get their permission to affix some of these on, on their signals. But right now, our current view is, um, to, to try to put them in locations where we can see, uh, if there is crime, uh, we can identify much more quickly inbound and outbound to your city. That way we can, um, be more responsive more quickly and of course free up the officer's time to deal with the continuing amount of, uh, call volume that we have.
Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you. All right. Well, first of all, um, to be very clear, this item is not a, a potentially action item when the request was made and the council voted on it. It was specifically stated that it would be an informational piece. Also, I, it, it concerns me a little bit, and I, and I believe that there are sincerely held beliefs here, but it, it's concerning to me that there are some sentiments being expressed and questions being asked that have nothing to do with what was asked of staff to, um, report back on. The specific request back on August sixth was to bring statistical data. In fact, the request was for a report beginning in January twenty nineteen. Well, this report, and hats off to those, um, who are responsible for making it, they've given us a report over the course of years so that we get a better view of year-over-year change. So in my view, the staff has gone above and beyond what the council directed them to do. I, I believe that some of the statements made are completely incongruent with the direction given to staff. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And so if I might finally, this was provided for informational purposes only. There's no, uh, direction required of the council at this time.
Yeah, I do have some speaker cards. Uh, the first one that I have is Romero Rodriguez.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Ressinger, for not giving us a hundred and eight-page report to read. So it's, it's, um, it wasn't demographics that he, he sent out. It was statistics. But as to demographics, um, Officer Captain, Captain, right, or Chief, or what is correct? Captain? Captain, Police Captain. I would also like to know of the seventy-five officers that, that work for the city under your, your command, we'd like to know exactly how close do they correspond to the demographics of the city of fifty-five percent Hispanic, nineteen point nine percent, uh, black, three point two percent Asian? And, uh, for the white population, it's very all over the place. It could be anywhere from seventeen percent or eighty-one percent. And what are the demographics of the officers actually working for the police force that represent Victorville? And also those officers also, what are, how many of them speak a second language or a third language? Because we know this is a very diverse, uh, city. Uh, it's not just Mexican people and, and, and white people here that speak Spanish and English. We have a great, great diversity of, uh, Middle Eastern people coming here to the city. So it'd be important to find out exactly the officers that represent us. We saw in the debates, Peter Buttigieg, how much criticism he got for not complying to the demographics of twenty-nine percent in his city, not meeting that. Uh, so we'd like to know exactly, uh, what do you have to work with? What do we have to see here? What representation the minorities have here in the city of Victorville? And as to Ms., uh, Dr. Ramirez's question, and September thirtieth of twenty eighteen, the governor passed Senate Bill twenty-four, uh, fourteen twenty-one, in which authorizes the public to actually request all, all records of police misconduct, police abuse, abusing civil liberties of the people. So now it's, it's not, uh, it's transparent, California now. So we have the right to have that. So, uh, on behalf of, uh, Councilwoman Gomez, if she obtains those rep, uh, reports, we'd like to have access to them as, uh, as, uh, people here at Victorville. It's very important to, and I know you're doing a good job. You're very respectful, Captain. Uh, but we'd like to know also what, what, how, uh, the, the police department. I've talked to other police agencies. I've talked to Mr. McMahon, to, uh, everybody around, even down the hill. And they said, well, it's, it's not really up to them. It's up to us. But yeah, it can, change can happen. Change can happen. And like I said, we need to have that diversity up here so somebody can really communicate with that, with that demographics of the city that's up here, not just one person talking to another person without understanding. It's very important.
Your time is up.
So that way we can see ourselves, we can see ourselves in them. Thank you very much.
Uh, Valentin Cortina?
Yes, thank you, City Council. We need to make our, our streets safe again for all Victorville residents and for those professional officers that patrol our streets. Deputies need to know that we support them when they say an incident happened the way they say it happened. And to accomplish this, we need technology of body cameras to support the side of the deputy's story, if it is correct. And if it is not correct, then we can find ways to, uh, correct it and prevent mishaps from happening again and again until we get it right. No more lives need to be lost. Body cameras should be at the top of our list for safety for all residents and deputies. Body cameras are used in all major cities and is nothing new to the police force. Thank you.
Maggie Martin?
Good evening again, Your Honor and Council. Here was another item I didn't want to talk about, but oh my God. Okay, so I don't know if people have hearing problems or they can't come to an inferred conclusion of a situation. Everybody's saying, including me, including them, we need them, him, him. We need more deputies. But if you cannot get a council to put more money for that in the budget, which brings me to something else, actually, into the budget, it's not going to happen. Okay, so there's so much stuff I want to respond to, so let me go quickly. First of all, this one right here, her? She's not here to support the police department. Hell, she's not even here to support the council and its mission and goals, much less the police department. Let's talk about statistically how many officers in Victorville, we're going to stick to Victorville because this is where we live, have been involved in rapes of suspects, rapes of witnesses, and all that nonsense. I encourage Ms. Gomez, Mr. Romero, or anybody else within the sound of my voice who wants to pay, wants to take their valuable time, unless they have too much free time, and get those statistics. And boy, are they going to be disappointed because it's miniscule, miniscule. And, and I will say that for the whole department. It would be miniscule officers that have been found in those kinds of dealings. I, I can only remember one in the twenty-one years I've lived here involving a deputy and somebody over at, at the mall. Miniscule. But to sit here and criticize and tell that man, or you think you're gonna, tell him what he should be doing. He gave you exactly what you wanted. She runs with it as an excuse to, to undermine the integrity of the police department. And no disrespect, uh, Mayor Protem Ramirez, but you're not happy with what you got, what you asked for. Actually, nobody could have said it better than Ms. Jones. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Um, I stand with you on that. I stand with them. Yes, we need more deputies. So let's just understand something. We're at an impasse. If we can't get more, we're going to have to revive something like Measure K, which is coming up. I'll save it for the next meeting or maybe public comments tonight. Because I'm hearing it. I'm hearing it from the public. When I moved here in ninety-eight, I had to put a call in for a deputy. They were there within an hour. Now, today, I might get a phone call at ten, eleven o'clock at night. I might not see the deputy the next day. This is something she doesn't understand and some of them. They're busy, twenty-four, seven on priority calls. They're busy. Thank you.
Katrina Gilbert?
Um, thank you, ma'am. I would just like to say, um, first of all, this is my first city council meeting, so I'm not too familiar with how things are running. And I am pretty young, so my information may be a bit more limited due to lack of experience. But I would like to say on the issue of crime and violence, they did fill out a report for you and offered you that report above and beyond what had been asked for. And if what had been asked for was clearer, they may have provided more information with that. These deputies work very, very hard. I've seen them in my own community. Um, I do not live in Victorville. I actually live in Hesperia. But this is my closest option to take a city council visit. These deputies work very, very hard and try to make the public as safe and responsible as possible. Um, I do not believe that demographics have anything to do with the police force. The way it works, they go through the academy. They take all sorts of tests. They take physical, physical fitness exams and obstacle courses that they have to go through to be qualified as a police officer. So I feel that race does not have any sort of influence on the police officers. They are qualified based on the academic, academy qualifications and the, um, knowledge and physical exertion that they exude. As far as body cameras go, as far as I know, body cameras are required by most departments and are public information unless the case is under investigation for any extenuating circumstances. And I do know that a recent bill was passed, um, having to do with making information for deputies public, especially in regard to court cases, by allowing defense to have access to these records in the use, in the form of evidence towards their case. I just wanted to say that basically the police are doing the best they can, and they're trying to work with everybody, the community. They're trying to work with the council. They're trying to work with the government and acting as a sort of segue between these forces. And I would ask that maybe a little more lenience or consideration for what they're doing would be given. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was the last card that I had on this item. I don't know if we need a motion.
There's no need. It's just a informational piece for you.
Okay.
So we're allowed to make comments, right? So, um, I'm going to go ahead and make a comment about this, if I may. So, um, the current city manager of Hesperia, who was at one point a law enforcement officer in the early nineties, formed in the city of Victorville a clique called the Sharks, where nineteen other law officers were recruited in the county. Their requirement was to be the black man to belong to this clique.
Madam Mayor, I will call for the orders of the day.
I'll go ahead and tell you guys this in, in the very end because they obviously don't want you to hear this, but I'll be able to say it.
I think you have a point of order. Is that?
Yes. No, I called for the orders of the day, so that's just to bring us back to the actual agenda item. But if it continues, I will make a point of order.
As a point of order, this message, I have an opportunity at the very end, and I'll make sure I say it.
We will continue. There was no motion or second needed on this item. Therefore, we move on to item D eight. Adapting revisions to the city of Victorville, City Council, uh, adopting revisions to the city of Victorville City Council Policy and Procedures Manual. Uh, Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council review and consider to propose revised City Council Policy and Procedures Manual and adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash zero five seven.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones, um?
I will allow for you to make the presentation. Thank you so much. All right, so briefly, on April sixteenth of this year, the City Council took action to direct the city attorney in coordination with the city manager to review and make recommendations for revisions to our current policy and procedures manual. Subsequent to that direction, the city's attorney office sent two drafts to the City Council for preliminary review, questions, and comments by council members, one on July ninth and one on August fourteenth. A final draft for review and consideration by the council was posted on the agenda of August twenty. During that meeting, the council voted to lay aside the business until this meeting to allow additional time for review. Given that all of our decisions are necessarily driven by policy and the development of policy and procedure is widely and the development of policy and procedure is widely held, as one of the most important charges of a city council, I would prefer that we table this item until our next meeting, when all council members can be present and contribute to discussion. Madam Mayor, I hand this item back to you. And when so invited, I'm prepared to offer a motion to table this item until our next meeting.
That is your motion?
If you invite one, I will make that as a motion, yes.
There is a conflict of interest here. According to your Charter of the City of Victorville, Article 2, Section 200, it says, "City Council sets policy and the city manager administers the governance." However, if you read page 355 of your resolution, that is not what is stated. There is a conflict of interest here and a conflict between your charter and your resolution. Your charter is your constitution. It is the same as the USA Constitution. It takes precedence over anything. Therefore, if you look at Section 1 of your resolution, Number 19-057, it reads as follows.
Madam Mayor, I must.
Excuse me.
I must object. I made a motion, so it's appropriate to make a second and then we can have. Begging your pardon, point of order, Madam Mayor.
She has called the point of order.
Point of order. May I state my point, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, the, the, the normal process when someone makes a motion is that there's a request for a second and then we get into discussion. So, I'm certainly willing and happy to hear everything that Mayor Protem wishes to say and take it to heart and, and, and consider it well.
Point of order, what's your point?
That there's a breach in procedure. And I was trying to explain that. You're certainly welcome. So, at this point, it's appropriate to ask for a second to table the motion, or table this item until the next regular meeting. And actually, if that is the case, then it becomes not debatable and you have to take the vote immediately. So, it's in your hands, Madam.
Well, I second your motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, at this point, that it's not.
Will I tell the next?
Yes, and there's no discussion on the tabling of an item, so we'd go directly to vote.
So, the motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Well, I have a question. If you haven't, if you have an item, you have to discuss it, don't you?
Not when it's a motion to table the item. There's no discussion on that.
So, then you have a motion and you have a second. So, Rita, you don't have to vote on that. You can give your questions out. So, don't, you don't have to second that and we can continue the discussion, Rita.
You are out of order.
There is no discussion. We have a motion and a second, so it's time to call for the vote.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Cox being absent and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
So, this item will be continued until our next meeting.
Yeah, you still can.
We're talking about item D8. Now, we move on to item D9. Contract renewals, annual service agreements. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council and Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve contract renewals on two annual service agreements to Mojave Water Agency and one annual service agreement to Sodaro for fiscal year 2019, 2020, per the adopted budget on June 4, 2019.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff on this item?
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Have anything on item D9?
Yeah, I was looking, I know this is not related to item D6, MWA renewal and Sodaro.
This is item D9.
That's what I just said. Did you say something else?
Well, you said you had.
Yeah, on item D9. So, we're talking about item D9, the adoption of MWA, the renewal one and Sodaro, which I thought was related to item D6, but I was told it's not. In terms of the Mojave Water Agency and the contracts that we're renewing, I know that we have allowed Adelanto through several agreements, whether they're verbalized or not, to either borrow or pay for water. And I want to make sure that I'm understanding how our contracts either allow or conflict with the agencies of Mojave Water Agency and the agreement with Sodaro and then what we initially do as a city to let others borrow or purchase the water.
So, as far as what Adelanto does, it's a, it's an emergency agreement for water. So, they're just a customer of the water district and they pay for their water. It really has nothing to do with this agenda item.
So, if it has nothing to do, then why even have an agreement and then allow others to take? And it seems like it's collaborative. I wouldn't quarantine it and say it's nothing that would have to do with this because if we have a, an agreement with an agency or two agencies, those agreements would hinder or harm or help other facilities that are coming in and getting water. Because if we have a contractual with MWA and we only have, let's, for example, a certain allotted amount of water, with that allotment of water, we have probably reserves or savings of water where we can allocate or allow other businesses such as Adelanto to come in and take in from that water. So, my stance is I'm not looking at this particular agreement as isolated in time. What I'm doing is, it has an overlay of how it taps into the other cities and what we're doing presently.
Yeah, what Adelanto pays for covers all of our costs in their entirety. So, everything's included in there as far as any type of obligations that the city has.
Would you expand on that? Would you expand?
That's out of our agenda item.
It is. It's Mojave Water Agency agreement.
We're talking about D9.
Would you expand on that? Because I didn't quite understand what you were saying when you said everything is paid into. You were answering my question, but it was just very short.
Adelanto has nothing to do with this agreement. Their, theirs is just for water purchases from the city.
Right, so, in other words, Mojave Water Agency agreements that we have with them as, as a city, you mean they don't overlap with anyone else? So, our water is just for us and not for anybody else? But yet, we still give it to other people, right? With the contracts.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, I'll try to, I'll make an attempt to try to bring some context to this item because these are dealing with purchase orders and, and to deal with our relationship with MWA. It's providing testing services and even having a purchase order to buy R-cubed water. But maybe backing up a little bit, MWA is the Mojave Water Agency and they are, they serve as the water master as well for an adjudicated basin. So, underground, literally underneath us, is a giant aquifer full of water that this entire valley depends upon. And MWA is also a state water contractor, which means they have access to the state water project, which is the aqueduct that runs south of our community and through Hesperia. And the role of MWA, I think, to, to generally characterize is to make sure that the underground basin that we all rely upon is managed properly, not just today, but that there's a reliable source in perpetuity for the years into the future. So, they're basically the groundwater managers and they ensure effectively that there isn't an overdraft situation. The basic rule of thumb is for every cup of water that's pulled out of the ground, you have to replace it with a cup of water from the state water project. I think that might be the easiest analogy. So, in, in terms of our relationship with MWA, they're effectively the, the wholesaler, if you will. We have an individual relationship with MWA for the replacement and for R-cubed water purchases. No different than how Adelanto or Hesperia or any other jurisdiction in this basin, they would have a similarly natured type of relationship with MWA. Not everybody has the same relationship we do on R-cubed, but certainly that's a, a system that is available to the other jurisdictions. And I believe based upon newspaper article, Adelanto is actually pursuing an R-cubed relationship with MWA. So, this item particularly is, is stated, has more to do with serving our relationship and, and getting water through MWA. The Adelanto relationship is completely independent of this, has no bearing on this, and is represented in a totally separate contractual arrange, arrangement. I believe it's called an emergency water agreement is the relationship that Adelanto relies on from Victorville because of the issues that Adelanto is having in its, in its water system.
I appreciate that explanation. That really does help delve into what I was asking. It's very unfortunate that sometimes the interpretation of my questions, either they're misunderstood or they're just not relationally trying to be explained. I'm sure that was not your case. You had a lot of looking to the city manager, who is your boss? And it's very political up here. And I totally understand why you would not be able to under, to understand the interpretation of my question.
Okay, your time is up. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'm just going to apologize to Mr. Matthews. I think the comment from our council member is definitely not appreciative of the, the value he provides our organization. So, I'm going to apologize. That was definitely uncalled for.
There was definitely nothing towards him. It was all towards you, city manager.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the City Council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, I'm going to take this opportunity. I appreciate the backhanded compliment that you're providing our staff. There is nothing against the staff member and that was the case. I'm going to apologize to him because that was not the intent and the interpretation. It's very unfortunate that the way I speak happens to be reinterpreted by our city manager in the way that it has. And I have the comment floor. Okay, and that's what I did. So, I appreciate the way you, you twisted that. Thank you very much.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Now, we move on to item D10. Award of Standard Construction Agreement to Shipley Construction and Plumbing for ADA Compliance Renovations of Lavatory at SCLA Building Number 728. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the award of a standard construction agreement to Shipley Construction and Plumbing for ADA Compliance Renovations of Lavatory at SCLA Building Number 728, Project Number CC19-124, in the amount not to exceed $53,900.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I do, Madam Mayor. So, on this particular item, the backup data indicates that Shipley is the lowest bid at $53,900 for the ADA compliance work. But is this also the lowest responsible bid?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the SCLA A Board of Directors approve the award, the awards, et cetera, in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Item D11, Library Master Plan Status Update. The recommendation is that there is no recommendation by staff at this time. Mayor Protem Ramirez, you want to present this? There is no recommendation, so.
May I just say, thank you, thank you, thank you for such a wonderful report. I am appreciative of the staff and for all the information that was written. I, I found everything that I wanted to know and I commend you. And I hope you don't stop working. And I, I would like very much to be a part of your study. If I can do anything, call on me. I, I, I looked at it, I read it, and I was totally impressed. And just for information, my first time that I worked with the library, I had to establish a library for Elmore Elementary School in Laguna Beach. And I was a former member of the Friends of the Library of Coppermont College, both as a professor and as a trustee. So, let me say, I was totally impressed by your report. I look forward to future presentations and I thank you very much.
I do have one speaker card. Cordina? Valentina Cordina.
Yes, thank you. We, as a city, need to focus our attention to the needs of our children, our youth, and our seniors by investing in our city library. That is the basis of all communities, a city library. Most of us know where our city library is, but we're scared to drive there because of the damage that can happen to our cars trying to get there. Once there, we don't know if we're going to find our car in the same condition when we come out. This is unacceptable for a city like ours that is the leader of the high desert. Most cities who are not the leaders have better libraries and better service than we do. And we shouldn't allow that to happen. We went out of our way to invest heavily in the golf course and we still don't know why we need a golf course, but we did it. We do know we need a library. Our youth, our children, and our seniors need a library. We need to focus our attention where our focus needs to be. So, please, put as much effort into our library as was put into the golf course. Thank you.
That was the only card that I had on this item. But there is no, well, motion. No action.
There's questions on this item, though. So, what was the purpose of separating library services from the overall park master plan?
I'm sorry, can you restate your question, please?
There's a separation in the report between two entities. What was that for? The park and the library with the $50,000?
So, basically, the, the reasoning is, is referenced in page 501 of the, of the agenda. Because of the comments made at the May 21st City Council meeting, it looked like there needed to be a more focused study of the library system, more so than the general overview that was going to be done when it was part of the larger park project. So, to give the library some focused attention and based on what we were hearing from the council at time, staff actually separated and did a separate, prepared a separate RFP for the library master plan.
Do you know specifically where the $50,000 goes to?
That's the budget amount for the study.
So, it's only for a study?
Correct.
And what mandates the appointment of money to be segregated from only something that would be obligatory to spend on library? I'm going to say survey now that you say that. Versus anything else at the general fund? General fund is not restricted monies. We can spend it as we wish.
Because the City Council directed staff to set aside $50,000 for the library study?
So, who's going to be trusting that the money is going to be specifically spent on something? Who's the overseer and the watcher for these fiscal expenditures when we don't have anything itemized for $50,000 and how it's being spent?
It was actually in the budget. There was oversight. It was fully disclosed in the budget. It's listed as a budgeted item.
So, in other words, we already done the survey and the $50,000 has been spent? That's why my question is being asked? Because it hasn't been spent? You don't have an invoice that you can show me for $50,000 where it went to, right?
It hasn't been spent yet. We have an RFP hitting the streets. When we, when that RFP process is completed and we award a contract, that's when the money will start to be spent on the library study.
Thank you. I like that clarification. Thank you. I like that clarification. That's why I was saying, how do we know a general fund money is being restricted to what we're saying when nobody is oversight watching it? And that's not just for library services. It could be for anything in the general fund that city council says, we would like in the general fund this money to be pre-allocated unless there's an oversight board or some kind of someone or responsibility for the community or our staff members are actually being, yes, this is what we're spending it for. So it's merely a question. So I appreciate that.
I think we're getting outside of our agenda item here.
No, it's within scope.
Okay, now, there was no action taken on this.
I did have one comment if I could, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate it. This item is a direct response to a request for a report. And so the information contained in it is, most of it is nothing new to us. We knew in the budget process that we appropriated $50,000 for a survey. The council decided that it wanted a survey because there was a lot of discussion about the library and the needs for our community and what does a proper library look like? How can we create a library that's going to serve our community over the course of the coming decades? A survey is needed. We're so, we're in the nascent stages of this. We're just now putting out the RFP. So this is a much fuller report than I expected since we just adopted the budget in June. So I appreciate the length that our staff went to give us this detailed information as it did. I find that the staff often does that, and I wish to thank them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, so that terminates that item there, and we move on to item D-12, a word of standard construction agreement to Westnet Inc. for the installation of first in alerting system at all city fire stations. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve a standard construction agreement with Westnet Incorporated to install a first in alerting system as required by Confire for station alerting.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time, from council members?
Yes. So it looks like this is a first of its kind, Confire Station for Station Alerting. Is that just something that we didn't need with County Fire? Is it something just because CalFire? I'm just trying to understand different requirements for the city needs and why this would be new for us with CalFire, but it wouldn't be something appropriate for public safety prior to that?
Madam Mayor and Council, to clarify, this is a requirement of all Confire agencies, contract agencies. So what they're looking to do is standardize their systems throughout all of the fire stations or fire departments of which they serve. This will also be installed in other nearby high desert cities as well. So this is not specific just to the city of Victorville.
So in other words, we didn't need something of this nature, this caliber, prior?
I'm sorry, the current system is just a radio system. And what they've found is that with that, there is not the redundancy that is being desired now. So by creating or by requiring that the first in system be established, or I'm sorry, installed, that there's a number of benefits that all of the fire service agencies will recognize.
If I'm understanding you correctly, we're being progressive. That's what it sounds like. We're upscaling, our technology is being up to par, and this is something good for our community.
This is an upscale and it is very good for the service levels provided to the community, yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anyone else? No, thank you. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
I make a motion for staff is asking that the council approve the standard construction agreement with Westnet Inc. to install the first in alerting system as required by Confire for station alerting. That's my motion.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember, I'm sorry, motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
Item D-13, city of Victorville diversity report. The recommendation, this information is presented as information only, being that Councilmember Cox is not present. I move that we continue this to our next meeting.
Second.
As a point of order, do we really need Mr. Cox in here not to do business? Oh my God.
Get out of order.
No, it's a point of order, ma'am.
You don't follow any rules or regulations.
The quorum and prophylate.
Madam Mayor, point of order.
Yes.
A motion was made. There was a second. It's not a debatable motion, but just for purposes of clarification, this was an item that was requested by Councilmember Cox, or at least he weighed in on it. So it would be only courteous to have him present.
Exactly.
Just like the last one, right?
Get out of order.
So are you.
Okay. Recession. Three-minute recess. Look at her. Andre. Our three minutes are up. Please find your seats.
I have a motion by Mayor Garcia and a second by Councilmember Jones to continue the item. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
What item are you on?
D-14.
That's the diversity, right? No.
I mean, D-13, yeah.
So the diversity that they want to table? My vote is no.
Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent and Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Did you want to say something?
Just for information, on the demographics and the charts of the elected officials, I noticed that we have, of course, zero percent for Asian, zero percent for black.
I'm sorry, we're not there yet. Well, you said you wanted to speak. I thought you were speaking.
I did. Why don't you make a correction?
We were on D-13. Okay, we move on to item D-14, appointment to Community Services Advisory Committee. Recommendation, any action is at the discretion of the City Council. Mayor Protim Ramirez, would you like to present this item, please?
I have to forth Mr. Pyle as a replacement for our committee on the question of community service advisory, a well-known individual here in Victorville who has worked as an activist in nonprofits. And I would like for him to come up, if it's all possible, to present him to you so that you know who he is. He is my newly, hopefully approved representative to the Community Service Advisory Committee. This is Mr. Pyle.
Mr. Pyle, it's very good to see you again.
Yeah.
So at this time, council members, do you have any questions? No, I don't usually find that appropriate.
Yeah, so for this item, is it just for Rita Ramirez or is it for everyone in the council? Vacant Gomez, so I'm assuming I can appoint mine as well. Yeah, the answer is, I guess, yes. So I don't have any questions for you. I just had clarification for the actual committee and what we were expecting.
Madam Mayor, could I say a few words?
Yes, you may.
When I first thought about being on the advisory council, just I favor libraries very much, so I want to be transparent, but I'm a Parks and Rec guy as well. But I'm concerned that there are five members on the advisory council, but there aren't. There hasn't been a meeting of the advisory council for six months, primarily due to lack of a quorum. So I hope that we have another position coming in. We have to, if it's an important enough advisory committee for the council to have appointed it, I don't know when, years ago probably, then it's important to staff it and to get reliable, qualified people for it. So I encourage you that if you do not now have an appointee on the Community Services Advisory Council, to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one speaker card on this item. Maggie Mark.
Good evening again, Your Honor and Council. I didn't, I'm not familiar with Mr. Pyle. I kept looking around the room going, does anybody look like, I've never seen him here before. And I don't know if I have or not seen him before. And I was kind of hoping he was not here, but it's, first of all, I got to be fair and say, I really don't know, and I'm afraid I'm going to speak out of turn, but I really don't know what the Community Advisory Council is. But the concerns that I have, and I hope no one will be offended, especially Mayor Protim or Mr. Pyle, but the concerns that I have are the resume in general. And what I note is, the last time, I don't know, I don't know how it goes here is it, because this is city, this is government we're talking about, but I look at a resume as basically like applying for a job, and I'm sure there's some major differences there. But in a job application, you generally try to keep things within the last 10 years, what your experience is. So I wish one of you would say something before I step in it. But I look at the resume, and I see the last time that he was employed in the, out there in the world, was 1992. And I'm concerned, hold on one moment, I'm sorry, let me look at my time. Concerned about, well, for a lack of better description, the overlap, a lot of his background is in church administration. Not that I have, for the most part, a problem with that whatsoever, other than I wonder if that causes a division between church and state, you know. So, and then when I look at the activities, and he seems very, you know, focused and articulate, 1964 to 1965, the activities. I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know him. I don't know if he's ever been at a council meter, meeting prior to this. He might have. But, and I don't know how long he's lived in Victorville. And I don't know what any current relationship he may have exist with entities out there in Victorville and this kind of work. So I, I don't know, without really knowing what the Community Services Council is, Advisory Council is, I just, I don't.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
That was the only card that I had on this item. So we need a motion in a second.
So I'd also like to have my appointee here. Romero has been here.
I don't have that on the agenda.
Yeah, his name is not on the agenda. That would be inappropriate at this point because the public has no information about him at this point.
They don't have any information about the appointment to the Community Services Committee?
They have a resume of Councilmember Ramirez as appointee person.
So is that procedurally now uncommon?
Yeah.
It's just a question for clarification.
I would recommend that you suggest that be on the next agenda if you want to make your appointment, and we put that on the next agenda. That would be appropriate.
All right, thank you.
Please repeat that.
It'd be appropriate. Councilmember Gomez wants to make an appointment, but that's not contemplated by this agenda item. So I have suggested that she ask for that to be added to the next council meeting, that she can make her appointment to that position.
I have already met with Mr. Pyle and already interviewed him.
Right. We're saying to go ahead with your appointment.
Your appointment.
Oh, okay, for Blanca's.
Yeah, Blanca. Ms. Gomez is asking about her ability to make an appointment. She, and my suggestion is we wait till the next meeting.
That's why I was asking. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Mr. William Pyle.
Second.
To the Community Advisory Committee.
Second. Motion made by Mayor Protim Ramirez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yeah, so if that is the case of the suggestion of the city attorney, why put Gomez vacant and not give me the information to be able to produce what is needed? I feel like this was just put in the agenda by whoever put it. I wasn't told by administration this is something that we need to look at. I don't know what the procedures are of 90 days beforehand we should do this, or in the past it's just been, okay, this is my appointment, or if it's just really the process of, do we even implement that in the policy? I don't believe so.
The staff report is just pointing out the fact that there are both vacancies, and since that time, you have received the agenda several days ago, I think, since that time, Councilmember Ramirez.
Seventy-two hours, yeah.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, there's a little bit of history to that, and I think this item specifically was calling to the attention, the obvious that we've got two positions available, and it was really intended to bring to a much clearer attention of Councilmember Gomez, that her position remains vacant. We have reached out to her on numerous occasions advising her that her previous appointee had stepped down, and in fact, the, Mr. Pyle is in fact correct. We have had meetings canceled many times because of lack of quorum. And quite honestly, the work of the CSAC, while it's broad in what they're responsible for, the very important part of work that I know they're focused on is the Citywide Parks Master Plan, and that's something that has to move forward, something that's desirous of this council. So really, this item was focused on, obviously, taking forward the recommendation from Mayor Protim Ramirez with her nominee, but then also raising the attention of the rest of the council that there is one vacant position. And considering the work of this committee, we as staff are advising that that fifth position be filled.
So.
At a later date.
Would you please tell me when you contact me by text or my cellphone? Because on several occasions, I have told administration that I get flooded with emails and my preferred contact is call me and text me. Can you show me that documentation that you reached out to me in those formats?
We have emailed you on multiple occasions.
Like I said, prefer text and call. If that's not the case, I didn't receive your memo. And publicly, I've stated that. I've asked for contact through phone or text because as many of us, we do get a swamp of nothing but emails, and something like this would have been important. So I'd like to make a motion to be able to establish right now also my appointee.
You'll have to wait until I get to that.
I do have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox being absent.
So I'd like to make that motion to have mine also appointed today.
Have to wait until we get to E3. Right now, we're going into public comments, and this is a three-minute time limit. The first card that I have is Carl Eversole. Is Carl here? No. Dorothy Miller?
Well, hello, council members. I am here again, not.
No. Dorothy Miller.
Well, hello, council members. I am here again, not because I want to be, it's because of the things happening. Many year ago, two years ago, when I started in about this boarded up houses, and the people kept breaking in. Well, now it's really gotten bad. They're taking the fences and ripped them down around the houses. Now it finally has sold, so Friday, there's supposed to be new, new people gonna be taking over. But in the meantime, we're still having the problems. And it just really is getting to us to no end. We're scared to leave our houses, because who's next? You know, and the police department, it's costing a lot of money to keep calling them out there, when it could have been taken care of a long time ago, when it was first brought up to the council, and it had not gotten, taken care of. So now we got this problem. But it is getting better, because they come out and arrested one of the people that had been breaking in, and they arrested him today. I mean, it's just been going on and on and on. Somebody's gotta step up the plate. And then another thing we got a problem with is the roads. And we've talked to the city about it, and they're supposed to be sending somebody out, but they haven't contacted us back yet. And same thing when I talked to Mr. Medsler about the pond over there. He never let me know if he ever went over there, or he ever did anything. Maybe he didn't do a thing. I don't know. No one lets us know what is really going on. We work at the city, we do what we can with the city, and we're about had it with it, because it's not working. And nobody seems to really care anymore. And these homeless people are just taking over the wash down there. I mean, that, that little camp thing just grew, they even have a car down there now. I mean, this is down in the wash. Now, it's just ridiculous. Now, somebody's gotta step up to the plate and take care of the business that has to be taken care of. So I wanted to bring it into your attention again. Like I said, year ago, two years ago, I brought this same thing up to you, and nothing got done. So now it is a disaster. So it's, hopefully, we'll clean it up, and we need to get help out there to take care of the things that's happening. And stolen cars, all kinds of things. Thank you.
Hi, council members. I just want to bring out that I'm gonna call it the Golden Triangle Creek. We have water that runs down from the Sunset Ridge and goes right down and ends up on Topaz. And what's happening is the water comes across Sierra and Clark's Lane, or Vincent Drive, as they call it, and leaves a large amount of sand there, and people are getting their vehicles stuck in there. There's about five or six families there now, and they're having problems. We don't, because they don't usually go that way, but the other people do. And the tow trucks won't come out on dirt roads to tow, so it's, it's a big problem. And we're getting more people in our area now, so I need to see if that can be addressed or not. Also, we talked about the libraries. A few years ago, we were talking about maybe putting a library in the west end of Victorville, because, you know, there's only one library, and nobody, Victorville's a little bit bigger than it was 20 years ago, and it would be nice if we could get a library over on our side. And the other thing is, I want to mention that we've been coming to these meetings originally since 2000, my wife and I. And we've seen a lot of things in those years, and we've done a lot of things, and you guys have done a lot of things. The problem now is, we can't talk to you, or a lot of people can't talk to you, because by the time the E1 comes up, people leave. They're tired of these long, drawn-out meetings. Never used to be like this. We could come in here and have a meeting in two hours or less, and got things done in the city. Well, we're not having that anymore. It's just too much grandstanding, or whatever it is, but it's just not good for the city, and it's not good for the people. They want to come here, I'm sure, and find out what's happening, but not this way. Thank you.
We come here to have our voices heard, to give out our opinions. But today, we're witnessing to the dissolution, the disarming of the voice of the people. Any topics that don't correspond with the opinion of certain council members get shelved, or gets called off, because someone's not here. We don't get our chance to state our voice. Right now, there was a topic coming up here, in which it gives the power to the city manager and to the city attorney, and bypasses the city council, which bypasses the people. The city manager gets the opportunity to suggest or cancel the meetings, and what's, what, what if there's litigation against the city manager? Who's gonna tell him, no, we're gonna have the meeting anyways? But he can cancel it. And little by little, the people, we're losing power. We see, we saw that today. Someone's not here, certain topics can be discussed. Oh, out of respect for him. No, what about respect for us? He constantly says he's, they're the ones in charge. It's we, the people. We voted you people in to represent us. But as we see right now, everything is falling apart. But for the people watching up there, remember today, today is very significant of the people that are actually trying to control the city, not lead the city, telling us what to do. Not guiding us, leading us, but actually taking control of what needs to be done, squashing things, covering up things. It's no, it's no secret that the city went through a very heavy litigation and lost $20 million. It's settled. Of course, it's settled. It costs money. All that money could have been used to build libraries, roads, homeless shelters, but it went litigation. Same thing with the $1 million a year for the pet food company. It was going there, but they try to spin it. And what? They cancel it. They shelve the meetings, because you know what? They can't take control. Right now, it wasn't gonna pass, because there was gonna be two votes against two. But it's not about that. It's about us, what we want. We are the majority now, the people want here. The gentleman's saying the meetings didn't last that long. Well, there weren't 123,000 people here before, in 2020. I mean, in the year 2000 and 2010. Now there is. There's more issues. But the thing is, we're still thinking about being in those, in those years. And no, the demographics have changed, the needs of the people have changed. The people that are here from down the hill, they want services, and they're not getting it. And what we saw today is people controlling this meeting for one person and not representing the people. And that, that people, please, take this in consideration. Go back and rewind this meeting, and look over and see exactly who's controlling this, not us.
Your time is up.
We should be.
Good evening again. First off, I have a very differing view from Mr. Ramirez. We voted for you. We voted for you to represent us. Guess who's in charge? You guys are, not us. You make the decisions for the city. You take the public input into consideration. But I, I don't know where that kind of skewed thinking comes from. But it's certainly not my educational experience and grade school of democracy. So, so the issue was also raised about, second or third time I've heard it from Mr. Ramirez about Hispanic deputies. I wish I could turn around, but I know I'm not supposed to. I can guarantee you, each and every one of you sitting up there, and probably the majority of people, I would say the majority, if not more, of the people sitting behind me, I've had more face-to-face contact with the deputies in this, in the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, and all the way up to the captain. And I can guarantee you, if you were invited, which you won't be, but if you were invited to send it in a briefing at 8 o'clock on a Friday morning, I'm sorry, 7:30 on a Friday morning at the station, you're gonna see Hernandez, you're gonna see Rodriguez, you're gonna see two Ramirez's, you're gonna see an Ortiz, you're gonna see a Navarro, you're gonna see two or three Martinez's. So please, please, don't, don't come up here and, and, hold on, Maggie, and make an idiot out of yourself, when you don't even know. You don't even know. You're making assumptions and throwing it out there. Okay, so on that. And by the way, the deputies are hired by, correct me please, Captain Bessinger, if I'm wrong, they're not hired by Captain Bessinger individually. They're hired by San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department Headquarters. Is that correct, Captain? Yes. And he, I don't think he gets to handpick who he gets up here, or if he has input. Would that be correct? Or not correct? He's not gonna tell me. But he, you know what I'm saying? They, they come through the academy, and then they come to whatever the station they're assigned to. And then Ms. Ramirez, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Ramirez brought up the issue of something about the El Paso shooting thing, and what are we doing to protect the people? You need to understand very clearly, police is reactive. They're reactive. They can't be sitting at my door, as much as I'd like it, your door, at the Walmart, at the grocery store, at the convenience, at the gas station. They can't do that. That's not their job. Their job is to get a call through dispatch and respond to that call. If they had time in this city to patrol, and I know they do, because I've seen them, they would be, they would be doing that. But once again, it goes back to they have priority calls.
My time's up?
My time's up. Thank you.
Good evening. I just have some observations. I know we all are well aware of all of the horrible crime that's been in our city in the past week or so. Our mayor issued a statement regarding it. I've been told that the city doesn't have any control over Section 8 housing. I believe that that is a huge contributor to our crime. The people who, not the people probably, possibly, who actually have the possession of the home and have the, the legal right to be there. Some years ago, quite a few years ago now, I actually sat on a jury on a Section 8 fraud case. It was so enlightening. You cannot be in a Section 8 home if you are a sexual, if you are a sexual predator, if you have a felony, if you're paroled. There's all kinds of people who cannot be in a Section 8 home as a resident. In addition to that, people pad the number of people who are in the Section 8 homes, because they then get a larger place or less money for their house. That, that jury's time that I spent was really, really educational. I've been told that it's the county that oversees the Section 8. I don't know if there's anything you can do, we can do. I've actually attempted to contact our supervisor, Lovinggood, and I truly have not had any response back to him. That's not recent. That's been some time ago. But to try to talk to him about following up on these Section 8 things. What do they do? Do they knock on doors? How do they check to see who's there? My other comment is, being retired, we have the privilege of driving around on our streets a lot more often. And we able, we see, I would probably say, not 50%, but a lot of cars, they don't have a current license tag on their, on their car license. If they don't have a current license tag on their, if they haven't paid their license fees, they don't have any insurance on their car, the driver's, the driver likely has a suspended license, which means they shouldn't be driving it, and/or whoever's driving it, they probably don't care, because what do they, what do they care? Are those the people that are running our red lights and causing our accidents? Maybe. I want to thank you guys for your proper procedural and your generally respectful behavior. This is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting, very different kind of meeting. It's not a town hall. It's you having your meeting in public. We are invited to participate. And anyway, thanks. I just wanted to offer those observations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Paul Ornelas.
Hello, council. I'm here once again, just as breath of fresh air, in the support of the skate park that is being developed here in the city of Victorville. I'm a skateboarder myself. I look forward to it. I want to thank you guys for personally approving it some, some time back. But at the beginning of the year, the Daily Press reported that it is stalled, and I just want to let you guys know that there are skateboarders out in the community that are highly anticipating the building of this skate park, the completion of this skate park. And there are even skateboarders like myself, who are willing to come into City Hall and advocate a little bit. But just, yeah, thank you guys, and, yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Katrina Gilbert.
Hello again. I came a little bit more prepared this time. First, I want to say thank you for what you do, because I know it's really hard to be in the position you're in, where you're listening to a bunch of advisory councils, your peers, the people who elected you into office, people who came before you, what you've seen and what you've done, is just absolutely amazing, and I give you major kudos for that. Pardon my slang, but major kudos. We did choose you. I know I personally didn't, I'm not able to yet, but the people of the city chose you to represent them. And there's a lot that goes into choosing a candidate, whether it's your personal views, your religious views, your political party alignment, if that's a consideration. And what you do, what you've done in the past, what you do in the future, that goes into what we see, what we want from you. You listen to what we say, you listen to what we do. You invite us to come to your meetings and speak on our, the behalf of the public, and to know that what we see and what we do, what we feel, and that influences your decisions, and we really appreciate that. If I can't speak for anyone else, for myself, I really appreciate that. What happens on the agenda is purely based on people's views, complaints, and stuff like that, and the council takes it upon themselves to build that agenda and make that agenda of what the people see, what the people want. There are four types of models of a representative. There's a delegate model, which is based purely on the will of the people. There's a political model, that follows their own sense of morals or their own sense of political views until the public is involved and they heed to the public's wishes. There's the conscious model, which people will go towards the will of the people until their conscience comes into play. If there's something that's not right or proper, their conscience will interfere with that and influence their decision. Then there's a trustee model, which uses info and powers to enlarge and refine the public will. And the ideal candidate or the ideal representative for the people is a combination of all four of these models. And I do not see it as wrong to express your personal views, your personal opinions, because you're one of the people. You're not, something in my youth group that we always say is, when you go up into a position of power, you will eventually come back down to the people. That's something that has always been strongly instilled in me. And what you do is not only for the people you are governing, but for yourself as well. And I think that your views and opinions should be viewed as well. I just wanted to say that, and give a little bit of an educational moment, if you say, to what, an ideal candidate, and what we see in, in the youth's eyes, in the public's eyes, as to what you do. And I'd like to say thank you again for allowing us to come and speak.
Thank you very much.
As a point of order, is the AC on really, I'm really cold. It's a point of order, and I can do that, ma'am. You should read your policy. As a point of order, it's really cold in here, and I would like to know how the AC is, at what degree?
It's actually a point of privilege, not a point of order.
Well, then, go ahead and correct me, and it's a point of privilege, and I'm looking for the AC. It's really high. So we can see, yes, ma'am, it is. So is someone addressing that, or is just Maggie Martin and myself agreeing that it's cold in here?
I'm always cold in here.
I feel, I feel actually great, but we can adjust it down. I can put a request in from one of staff. I'll do that.
Keith's taking care of it.
Okay, so that was the last card that I had on the public comments. So now we move on to a report from our city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So Wednesday, September 18th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we have another Friends of the Library book sale. we have another Friends of the Library book sale. That's at the Victorville City Library. Our annual event is Saturday, October 5th. That's the 18th Annual Fall Festival. It's going to be here at Victorville City Hall from 11:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. That's going to be an opportunity to celebrate community at the City of Victorville Fall Festival, a street fair experience with free live entertainment, musical performances, pony rides, and a free kid's zone. I've got flyers here that I can make available to you. We'll also be making them available community-wide. And more information can be found through our Community Services Department. We have a residential water conservation workshop in Spanish on Friday, October 18th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's here at City Hall in Conference Room D. It's free, but pre-registration is required. This is a workshop presented by the city and the Mojave Desert Resource Conservation District. We also have another annual event, Victorville Community Cleanup Day, Saturday, October 19th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It's various locations throughout the city. Community Cleanup Day is a day where volunteers will receive a free t-shirt, gloves, litter sticks, bags, water, and coupons for discounted lunch at local restaurants. More information as well can be found through our Community Services Department. And at this time, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to E3, which is council members' discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Three-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
So body cameras for contracted sheriff deputies and law enforcement that work for the city. In the city of Victorville alone, there has been, over the last few decades and even over the last few weeks, a number of recent civil disturbances, which have included subsequent instances of lethal use of force by officers, which highlights the ongoing challenges in maintaining the public's perception of law enforcement and the legitimacy, which includes a particular use of force. I'm requesting that this council take a call to action to give specific direction to the city manager to negotiate in the contract the body worn cameras for all county sheriff employees that are stationed or working within the 72 to 74 square miles area of our city.
Is that an agenda item?
Technology can be mounted on an officer's eyeglasses or chest area and offers real-time info for the use of officers on patrol.
Ms. Gomez, is this an agenda item?
The information and the contact to the members of the community.
Is this an agenda item?
Aren't we on that item?
We're on agenda items.
So hello, it is.
What are you agendizing?
You're not listening because you're so busy trying to interrupt me. You know I'm on a three-minute, and that's what you're doing. That's what the presiding chair does, interrupts and doesn't listen. The second thing is a point of the advisory committee. And the third one is municipal wireless networks. We don't have a network system in our city that allows individuals who are not able to have broadband assistance to be able to have something at a smart city like the city of Victorville. And then the next one is census updates on the progress regarding city and outreach. Seeking council support for the bodies so that we're aware of the processes and the steps as the city continues its efforts to bring reasonable updates. And then the next one is updates on the police agency reports based on the questions that were produced on item D7. And then finally, we have a lot of people that come into our meetings on a Tuesday night. We should probably vary and have Sunday, Saturday, or some other time to not have the same crew of people coming in, but a diversification.
Is that a motion to add all of those items?
Well, I did one individually, but my time at three minutes was being interrupted. So it's individually... Yeah, I named them all.
I have not heard a single request for a motion yet.
Because E3 is incumbent of, are you putting something yes or no?
It requires a motion and a vote of the council.
Exactly. And I've stated all of them, but I was being interrupted, not able to finish.
So the question is, is that a motion to agendize all of those?
And the question and the response was, yes, each one individually. We're not going to do all of them together because clearly they're going to say no. Each one individually.
What is your motion?
Well, I already stated them. They're all there. I enumerated them all.
I have not heard you make a motion yet.
That's because you're not listening either. Do you want me to speak in your language?
Please, just make your motion.
I did.
Your time is up.
We are on item E3. Possible action regarding the items. So they're there. I did. They're already motioned. You're asking me to say, "I motioned that"? That's not what I've done in the past.
I understand. There should be... Let's consider it. There's a motion for all of those items. Is there a second?
There be no second, the motion dies.
All three motions die.
It was more than three.
Okay.
So then, don't say anything when I try to appoint someone. What's the whispering going on over there? I'm sorry. Very distracting.
I apologize, Councilmember Gomez.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I heard a couple of things and I wasn't sure.
Okay.
I apologize, Councilmember Gomez.
Does anybody else have anything to agendize?
No, thank you.
Now we move on to reports from council members.
Yeah, I'm looking right now. I'm scrolling down to get my stuff. I'm going to ask you, first of all, to stop interrupting me. You're very rude. Very rude as a presiding chair and very selective into what you're saying. So you need to stop interrupting me because that's part of my three minutes. The current city manager of Hesperia, who was at one point a law enforcement officer in the early '90s, formed in the city of Victorville, was living in the city of Victorville as a police officer under the city's guise, formed a clique called the Sharks, where 19 other law enforcement officers in the county were recruited. One requirement was to beat up a black man to be initiated and belong in that clique. This infamous individual and 19 others who were part of this gang had to have a tattoo, whether it's on their left or right ankle. I would say that for all of us to become aware in our communities, to be feeling safe, we need to understand the history of the city of Victorville and the police force in Victorville. Please, know that there was an investigation. I talked to the person that did the investigation. It's very unfortunate that you don't know what is happening. So if you see a lot of racism and bigotry in our city in the High Desert, you will see some aspects as to why. The next thing I want you to know is, please, there is no incongruency with transparency and public safety. I'll leave you with a name. Michael Bradbury. Look it up. The next thing for the Census 2020... It was about a month ago in March or before that that I brought to this council documentation for the Census 2020. Administration had its ears closed. It was like a statue. They didn't listen. We had community come out and argue 2020 was really important. I'm so glad that we have officials that collaborated with each one of us to open the eyes of administration and staff to understand the importance of the 2020 census. This is how we collaborate as council members, as community members, with state officials or individuals who do the Census 2020. So if it didn't get through from my... Yes, I know it's funny, Mr. Metzler. From my wording. Or it didn't come through from the community, guess what? It still went through. Regardless, we're still collaborating. You don't know when it's going to come, but when you know it's coming, you're going to adopt it because you see the betterment, even though you don't accept it from my mouth or from the mouth of the community. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Did anyone have anything?
I would like to announce that I will be representing the High Desert through SCAGs on September 25th in Los Angeles, the 26th and the 27th. I will be in Anaheim, representing the High Desert in regards to transportation.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. So since our last meeting, I attended a San Bernardino County Transportation Authority meeting, as well as I've had a number of other meetings. What has stood out? All of us know that just very recently, we had a very somber day, 9/11. And on that day, I attended the Night of Grace and Unity in the Community at the Burning Bush Church. The event remembered and honored the fallen and all of the heroes of 9/11. Present were many dignitaries, including Sheriff McMahon, representatives from state and national offices. And many thanks belong to Regina Bell, the founder of Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders Project for inspiring and organizing this event. It was the epitome of community coming together to recognize the importance of loving one another, no matter our cultural differences and our varied skin colors. We sat side by side to watch the movie Amazing Grace that documented the great Aretha Franklin. It was fabulous. But what moved me most about that evening was how it concluded. We all formed a large circle around the church and hand in hand, we all sang, "I'm proud to be an American." It was electric. It was meaningful. And it was a profound blessing to our community. So I'd like to thank Pastor Denson and Mrs. Denson for caring about us all, for remembering our great losses and honoring the brave. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. There be no other business before the council. This meeting is adjourned.